Ladies and gentlemen, I'd call this meeting to order here and welcome everybody here today for our March the 9th, 2023 board meeting. I'd like to open the meeting here, and the first thing I would like to do before we get into anything is have a moment of silence for Frank Kober. All right, thank you. Our first item on our agenda is an indication from Pastor Lee Farmer.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming.
Gracious God, I thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and offer up a prayer, a blessing upon our board of supervisors. As they conduct our county's business, I pray, Lord, you give them patience, that you give them wisdom that they need. We're very thankful for their willingness to serve our community. And thank you, Father, for the blessings of living in such a wonderful place. I pray all this in your precious son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Pledge of allegiance. Let's all stand for pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our next item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any deletions or additions to the agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
No move. Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, our next item is the approval of the minutes. And we have minutes from February the 2nd, 2023, and February the 9th. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Oh, I moved it. We approved.
All right, I got a motion to have second.
I'll second it.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, our next item would be our presentations. And we have All Points Broadband. We have Tom Ins. Anyone here from All Points Broadband?
Yes, I'm ready to do it.
Okay. Glad you could make it, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a quick update tonight. I just, I wanted to remind some folks that we're doing a site visit next week with the CD, the CD providing the grid. We're also going to provide another regional update to all the northern counties next Friday, and I expect more information to be available then as not all of our February progress supports come in from our vendors. And we said that, I know you all have seen a lot of homework going on in Northumberland County, all over the place, and if any of the supervisors would like to join us for a field visit to see that ongoing construction, we'd happy, we'd be happy to arrange that. I think the earliest we could do it would be next Wednesday morning. I'll work with Luttrell and Drew on that, so if anyone is interested, please let them know. Today, we've completed about 50% of the make-ready construction on all poles, and a major milestone achievement is that all of our pole attachment applications have been submitted and accepted by the electric utility partners. And then, once that make-ready construction is done on a pole, we receive an notice to proceed, and we are able to install our five. Northern Net Electric, Co., and Dominion have been hitting all of their monthly throughput targets to keep the project on track and on schedule, and are processing and approving more poles every week. I wanted to point out that Dominion is still on track to be complete with their middle mile network soon, and we brought on a primary skilled vendor called the Timmins Group. They've been adding building work and engineering teams to keep the Northumberland portion of the project and the entire Northern Net project on track and on schedule. I will remind folks to go to apbfiber.com so they can pre-register for notifications and confirm that they're in the project. Also, I want to point out that it's not required to pre-register to be included in the project, but it is strongly encouraged. Northumberland, right now, I think they're at about 40 or 45% of locations pre-registered, which is the highest in the area, so I know you all have been doing a good job getting the word out. There's another website I want to make sure people know about. It's affordableconnectivity.gov. It's affordableconnectivity.gov. Residents can go there and see if they're eligible for a $30 per month discount. This would apply to all points broadband services and to folks outside of the project that they have a reason line today. They can get a $30 discount. This is either based on household income or a whole number of qualifications, including whether or not you have a child at a school that offers free reduced lunch. So there's a lot of ways to qualify. Again, it's affordableconnectivity.gov. For area customers, I know there are a lot of construction crews in the area today, and it's not the same construction crews that are doing installs, so please do not approach them and ask for an install. They're working on the poles now. We'll notify customers about 90 days in advance when they can sign up. That'll be via email if they have pre-registered, or we'll also do traditional mail flyers and yard signs and door hangers as well. And as we reiterate, the crews out there today are not doing customer installs. We've had a couple of them approached by residents, and they're really not able to do that, so. The last reminder here is that we are focused on the unserved locations that have been part of the grant project. We've been getting a lot of interest outside of the project area recently, and we will get to this, folks, after the Vadi grant project is closed out, but we're not using any grant funds to go into areas that are currently served. So I know there's a lot of interest in that area, but we have to focus on the unserved first. So that'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, we're doing a site visit on next Wednesday and another regional update next Friday.
All right, any board members have any questions? Staff have any questions?
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
When can the public expect it to be connected? When's the first connection gonna happen?
It's gonna be later this year before September.
Well, the first time, it was the first quarter. Now, it's the second quarter. What you just said in September, that's the third quarter.
Yes, sir.
Because I see Lancaster County is starting to get some connections, and they weren't part of this Vadi grant, and of course, King George is less than happy too, because they put in extra money.
Lancaster will not be getting service before Northumberland. They are about a year behind the grant cycle.
Well, that's not what I have read. But you're saying possible first connections in Northumberland County in the third quarter, possibly as early as September?
Yes, sir. It could be before then, but I knew by September.
You missed another month, then you can be the fourth quarter.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anyone else have any questions? Staff have any questions? All right. Mr. Ins, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for coming today. All right, our next item is we have Adam Duncan here from Robertson Farmer and Cox Associates.
Thank you very much. I'm here to present the audit report for the annual audit. It began July 1st, '21 through fiscal year June 30th, 2022. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest opinion we can give, on the financial statements. We did have two material weaknesses that we discovered during the audit. We'll go over those later after we get through the actual audit report itself. We're required to audit some federal programs every year as the county spends federal dollars. The three programs that we audited this year were the COVID-19 education stabilization grant funds. We audited the food stamp program at social services, and we audited the water and waste disposal systems program for expenditures made for the water sewer system. The unassigned general fund balance of the county was approximately $9.2 million at the end of the year, with an operating budget of around $32, $33 million. Undesignated fund balance represents about 30%, which is a very good number. Most forecasters advised to maintain 20% to 25%, so the county is in a strong position in that regard. Fund balance does not include unspent American Rescue Plan Act federal funds. About $650,000 at the end of June was unspent, plus the county also received the second half of their allotment of $1.2 million, which was received in July of 2022. So no, again, none of that is included in the June fund balance number. Tax collection percentage right around 101%, so the treasurer's doing a fine job of collecting bill taxes and also delinquent taxes. The county did implement a new accounting standard, GASB 87, which is recognizing lease liabilities and lease receivables. There was no significant change in fund balance. It just is a change in the way that lease, operating leases like copiers, things like that, and also leases possible cell phone power, you know, payments that come into the county as well. So that's will be a new item in the report as we go through it. Also, I'd like to thank the, report that we did receive a lot of cooperation from all the departments this year in the course, during the course of the audit. I've always liked to make sure that we, make sure that you all know that. We did issue a management letter. There are four points, other than the material weaknesses, that we wanted to just disclose to you all. The school board public hearing on the budget, they did not meet the code by advertising that the budget is going to be, the public hearing is supposed to be advertised at least 10 days before the public hearing. They did not do that. Also, we've reported in prior years, the school cafeteria maintains a bank account. It's used to record local collections of meal sales. No other transactions flow through this account. We continue to recommend periodic transfer of this money to the primary bank account to offset related expenditures, thus maintaining only a minimal balance in this cafeteria bank account. Also, the school fund cafeteria expenditures exceeded budgeted appropriations for the year, so make sure that the, and this goes for the county too. You always have to make sure to appropriate funds if your original budget is going to be over expended, whether that be from existing fund balance or new revenue sources. And also, for some of the federal programs at the school board, federal money is received on a reimbursement basis. After you expend it, you have to request it. These requests were not being made very timely for the Title I and Special Ed program, so there's a lot of money that's still out there at the end of June that the school board needed to request, and I understand the new finance director has taken that upon themselves to make sure to start doing those in a timely manner. I briefly go over the actual audit report. I don't know if you all have a copy or, I'll just, I'll go by exhibit numbers. Exhibit one is statement of net position. This just lists all of the assets, capital assets, liabilities, long-term debt, and then ending equity at the bottom. Total net position of the county is $17.9 million. Exhibit two is basically an income statement for the county. It goes over all the revenues and expenses, kind of in a summarized manner, and you'll see at the bottom that total change in net position for the year was a positive $1.7 million. Now, exhibit three, this is the fund-based statements. These are how you all keep your accounting records on a fund basis. So you'll see at the bottom, unassigned fund balance is $9.2 million, total fund balance approximately $10.2 million. So again, as I mentioned earlier, a strong position for the county. And then exhibit five is a brief summary of the revenues and expenditures by function. And bottom line at the bottom, net change in fund balance for the year of positive $261,000. Exhibit seven, this is the statement of net position for your enterprise business-type fund, which is the sanitary district. And we'll report at the bottom, you'll see total net position of positive $3.6 million, of which $520,000 is unrestricted net position. Exhibit eight is basically an income statement for sanitary districts, and again, bottom line at the bottom, change in net position, positive $850,000. And exhibit nine is a statement of cash flow that shows where, for the sanitary district, where money came in from and how it went out and was spent. And in the middle, it shows the net increase for the year of $81,000 in cash. The next several pages are just notes, which are required disclosures that we make on, to get into more detail over some of those items that I just mentioned. I'll let you browse those at your leisure. And starting on page 90, let's see, where are we at? Starting on page 129, Schedule I, this lists all of your revenues in detail. Also, it shows how they fared positively or negatively with the budget. And then, beginning on page 135 is Schedule II, which is the same thing, but just for expenditures. It shows the actual expenditures for the year by department and also how they fared positively or negatively with the budget. The next few pages are statistical information, and the last couple of pages are those two material weaknesses that we needed to discuss. So the first item, finding one, reconciliation of school fund expenditures. The school, the school fund expenditure details maintained on a accrual basis. The county treasurer's ledger is on a cash basis. A June 30 run of school fund checks included. The school fund expenditure detail was not processed until July, was not identified as payable for purposes of reconciliation. We recommend procedures being placed to reconcile at a minimum monthly the expenditures reported at the school board to what the county treasurer has in their ledger. And again, I did mention the school board has a new finance director who is aware of this and addressing the finding. And then, number two, school board expenditure documentation, approval and payment of invoices. We do a sample of invoices that we examine to see how they are, internal, the county internal controls are being followed. Documentation was missing for some expenditures. In addition, overpayments were made periodically as balances forward were included with payment. Again, we recommend procedures be put into place to obviously not have this happen on a, we can understand if it happens once, you know, twice in our sample, but not, not to the level that we found several that we, out of our sample. And so, the school board finance director also is aware of this and will be addressing the issue. That's all I have. If anyone has any questions or comments.
All right, any board member have any comment or question?
I have several, but.
Whoever wants to start first.
Were you actually involved in this audit itself, or are you part of your, you and your staff?
Yes, I was, I was here.
All right. What, when does the audit process for this cycle begin?
The process for the year ending June 30, 2023? We will do prelim work.
Oh, excuse me, for the one that was just that you're presenting on?
Oh, okay. Well, usually in May or June, we do some preliminary work.
Right.
And then, the final field work is done usually in October or early November, because the audit is actually due to be presented to the state by December 15th is the due date by code. And then, we present to the county normally either in December or in January.
And as part of that process, whom do you notify, and if so, how?
Do you mean, do we notify the state that?
Well, I'm saying at the county level. Who do you notify?
We notify that the treasurer and the county administrator that we, if we're not able to complete the audit timely, then that's who we would notify.
Okay. But as far as notifying to gather the information that you need to complete your audit?
So the county uses an outside consultant to prepare for the audit.
Got you.
And my understanding is issues at the school board were the cause for the delay this year.
Okay. And how many years have you been doing with Robertson Cox and Farmer?
About 20 years.
20 years. You, how many years of that have you been working, doing Northumberland County's audit? 20 years?
About four.
Four, all right. In that 20-year experience, Robertson Cox and Farmer, have you ever had to see the letter written to the auditor of public accounts that was written on behalf of the county?
You mean as far as being late?
Yes.
Yeah, there are counties, obviously, that don't get reported on time, and they, I believe, recently, they've, a website notice has been advised to be posted.
Well, I agree with them. But as far as you know, it's been, we've never had that problem here in Northumberland County.
We certainly didn't in my last four years.
No. And you mentioned about the expenditures exceeding appropriations?
Yes.
Approximately how much, or how much was it? You would know it more than approximate.
It wasn't the school fund, it was the cafeteria, school cafeteria fund. $208,000.
$208,000. And you, and what, the school has, and the county have to come up with corrective action plan, and is that in place, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, the new finance director at the school board is aware of the situation. Other than that, I personally don't know anything other than that.
Because of this type of letter, would a correction action plan be required then? Or highly appropriate?
A written plan, I'm not sure if it's required, because it's not a federal finding, but it is required to be reported in the audit as we have presented.
Right. I think we received one. Yeah, I know we received one. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anyone else have any questions? Jim?
Sound good.
Stallone?
No.
Yep? All right. Staff have any questions?
I do now.
All right. I guess my question is, how many times did you have to request this information in order to get the audit done?
To be technically clear, I would say that the consultant was the one requesting most of the information that was needed, so we would receive updates from her. So I would say probably two or three times that I, we, our office requested information, an update, as you might say, from her, which she had to do to receive it, I wouldn't know.
All right. And what was the, what was the last date of getting all of the information, or last month that you received everything?
I think it was around February 15th, somewhere in that area.
And it should have been done by October at the latest?
No, it's due December 15th, but our normal audit would be done in November to have a month or so to meet the deadline.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right, anyone else have anything else?
The consultant was portraying us to help yourselves. Do you think having the, to complete the audit, do you think that consultant helped or hindered you in completing this audit?
Definitely helped.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That's, that's why she's hired.
Yeah. So that was, that saved you from having to do some of this legwork also.
She provides us with a great deal of the information needed to complete the audit.
That you would have had to do yourself.
Mm-hmm.
Got you.
All right, anyone else have any questions? If not, Mr. Duncan, I appreciate it very much. Very good report. Thank you very much.
I presume these are your associates who helped do the work too?
Mr. Duncan?
Sir?
One second, please.
Were these some of your associates who worked with you also?
Yes, sir. I don't know who that is.
Okay, I saw somebody going with you. I was curious.
All right, our next item is Ellen Kirby, our treasurer. Good to see you, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm very happy to report that our collections for the tax year '22 have gone just as smoothly as in past years. We have 3.5% uncollected at this point, which is exactly what it was last year for the '21 taxes. And the '21 taxes to date, we've collected 99%. So by June 30, I'm expecting a 98% collection rate for the '22 tax year.
Okay. All right.
And your biggest uncollected is personal property as opposed to real estate? Percentage-wise?
Percentage-wise, yes. Yes. So, but we have means to collect the personal property, so by the end of five years, we're writing off about $30,000 that we could not collect. That may not be valid assessments, or people are deceased, that sort of thing.
But we heard 101% collection. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. I have an excellent staff.
Yes, you do.
Any other board members have any questions? Staff have any questions? Well, thank you again for a good report, and thank all of your staff too for all the help they've been and all the excellent work.
Thank you. If I may, I have one more item.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to let you all know that I will be retiring at the end of the year.
Oh, Lord.
It's been my honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Northumberland County, and it's been an absolutely wonderful job, the most rewarding career I could think of. I have been able to implement many efficiencies in the office, streamline tax collections, add services like DMV and passport application, and improve customer service. But the best part of all is being able to help people, and I think I have been able to do that in the 45 years I've been in office. I'm very appreciative of this board and all the past boards since 1980 that have supported me and my office, and all the dedicated public officials and employees of the county, the constitutional officers that I've worked with, and especially county administration. And I'd like to thank Luttrell especially, and Kenny Eads, and John Burton before him, because if our offices do not cooperate, it hurts the public. And when all of the offices work together, it really does benefit the citizens of this county. I leave with the county in very good financial shape. I'm especially pleased that we- I'm especially pleased that we got an upgrade on our credit rating from Moody's this year, just a few months ago. And I leave an excellent staff in the treasurer's office. They are the most dedicated group of people, they are professionally certified, and they are dedicated to public service. And it has been my honor to work with them. And I know I'm going to miss them, I'm going to miss all the people I work with, and especially the public. Whatever the future holds, whatever my next career may be, because I hope there is another career, I'm still pretty young, I know I'll be focused on helping people, and I'll always be available and at your service. And I thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service, you're going to be greatly missed. I will miss you personally, because you've been a lot of help to me over the years. Thank you very much.
And I want to second that. And the, the power of your office, and the service of your office, was shown during the pandemic. DMV slept. You know how far people in the state of Virginia was coming here to be served when DMV did what DMV did? So you showed your worth then if you didn't do before, and thank you.
Above and beyond.
What?
I want to thank you for reaching out to the total community. No matter what part of the community it was from, you really reached out to help. I really appreciate that.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, our next item is the update from Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. David Beal. Good to see you, sir.
Hey, good to be seen.
Good to be seen, that's right.
Good evening. We've been working hard, we've graded gravel roads throughout the county. We repaired low shoulders on 360 from Horsehead to Burgess. We've cleaned ditches on various routes, patched potholes, repaired signs, cleaned storm drains countywide. The pipe replacement we've been working on on 360, I do expect that to be completed next week. We're coming back to grout that pipe, or the contractor's coming back to grout that pipe, grout the old pipe in next week. Upcoming, I still have the pipe on 200 we need to fix. That probably won't be in the next month, but hopefully in the next few months we'll get that done. We do have a slope repair on 360, and we'll continue to patch potholes and clean ditches countywide. I did add the pavement schedule to this month's report. As far as the plant mix, hot mix asphalt, we're going to pave 360 from the undivided section there, just west of Reedville, all the way through Route 644, Main Street in Reedville. And at the request of the town and in coordination with Mr. Jet, we're planning to close the passing lane in front of the fire hall there in Reedville as part of that paving and restriping effort.
David, I'm not going to play you right on. I see you got on that paving, is that going to be milled also from laying all the way down?
I'm sorry.
The 360 that you're going to have on there, you got paving, but is that going to be milled also before you pave?
No, that section will be an overlay.
Okay.
And then the remainder of Reedville, and the Kirby gutter section will be milled overlay. I'm going to double check on that, but I'm pretty sure that, that two-lane section is an overlay. All the surface treatment routes are on there, and you will see that is a long list of routes. So there will be a lot of work here in the county to get all that done. I do believe we have the largest surface treatment contract in the Northern Neck statewide this year. We need to update the secondary six-year plan, I guess we'll do that in May. The structure and bridge items, 605 is complete, they've moved to 604 on their scour repair projects. I did have one item I would like to discuss with the board. We are starting to plan replacement of a bridge on Route 611, Gillums Road. It is a one-lane bridge on a gravel road, if you're not familiar with it. The existing bridge is just over 11 feet wide. The approach roadway on either side is about 12 feet wide. We're proposing to replace it with a one-lane bridge that's 14 to 16 feet wide. The proposed bridge will have rails, the existing bridge does not have rails. Those rails will be 3.5 feet tall. The traffic count on that road, I went back the last 20 years. It varied from nine cars a day, to 20 cars a day, to five cars a day. So in order for us to build back a one-lane bridge, we have to have concurrence or request from the county to build a one-lane bridge. So I'm asking you tonight for your concurrence, and what I needed in writing, that you all concur that we just build a one-lane bridge back on that road. There are no houses, I think the traffic count probably is a little seasonal, I would expect during hunting season. It's mostly just agricultural or forest land, so there may be a little more traffic in the fall. But there are no residences on that road, just some farming and agriculture.
Would that bridge be plank, like the current bridge?
It'll be a concrete.
Concrete.
Concrete bridge.
All right, how much, how much farm traffic do you have over, you know, heavy equipment and everything, combines, tractors, all this?
I had a staff member reach out to a gentleman, Mr. Hinton, that farms along that area, and he said he didn't bring his equipment across the bridge, normally just, he might take an empty truck across it from time to time. But to answer your question directly, other than that kind of anecdotal information, I don't know specifically how much equipment crosses it.
Well, with a new bridge, they may be bringing their equipment across if the rails, if your three-foot-high rails don't interfere.
The, the new bridge will not have a load rating, so it won't, the load rating won't be reduced. So any, anything could cross it, as long as it can fit across it.
Okay.
But that width, you know, if somebody's bringing an 18-foot combine across the bridge, it's not going to fit.
They're not going to get 18-foot combine up that road, I can tell you.
They won't get that up a road anyhow.
That's not.
I'm not sure, that's 18 feet wide in spot.
Right, I said the approach roadway is about 12 to 14 feet.
But you got hills and all like this, it's not good, you got washes in places, so.
But it is an existing state-maintained gravel road.
Yeah, right.
It is eligible for, you know, if you want to put it on the secondary six-year plan to hard-surface it, I don't know how many years it would take to build up enough money in the fund to do it, but it is a road that's eligible to be hard-surfaced.
Well, then you got to worry about Bunker Hill Road on the other side. So they're two long gravel roads, and that's, that one spot with that bridge is, you don't want to meet anybody even as it currently exists, and I doubt any farm equipment goes over there. Even a farm truck would be, that hill is kind of steep, I'm not sure they want to take anything of load up there anyway.
That's, that's my understanding as well, it's a. But we're, you know, we're trying to be good stewards, we don't want to build a bridge that's wider and doesn't serve, you know, it's rare that two cars are passing on that bridge. And obviously, if we build the bridge wider than it is now, that'll increase the right-of-way needs, so we'll have to take land from the adjacent owners to get that built, and we try to avoid that whenever we can as well. But, but we would need the county's concurrence to build back a one-lane bridge.
All right, it was a pleasure, boys.
Some of it.
Got a motion? Do I have a second? A second? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Take it, Mr. Beal.
Do you have any other questions for me?
Stoll, you got anything?
Yes. There's still a, a big problem of trash. What can we do? Is something down the highway, I mean, you got people throwing mattress out on the highway, you name it. Isn't anything that can be done through VDOT?
Well, we certainly have, we found that public education is the best way to reduce litter. So we have adopted highway programs, and Beautify Virginia, and several other programs. But I can't keep people from throwing it out anymore.
I know you can't, I can't either.
Our plan, what we budget for with litter pickup is the primary routes, we pick up three times a year, and the secondary routes, we pick up twice a year. It's worse this time of year, because we do it with our mowing cycle. So I pick it up in the spring, I pick it up in the middle of the summer, and then I pick it up in the late, late into the fall. And then we give about six months before we pick up again. But we have used some inmate crews to pick up, you know, hot spots here and there.
Didn't we have a rule that if a person, trash fell off a person's vehicle, and the name was found out, didn't we carry them to court one time? What, what was the rule on that? Anybody remember?
That's not a rule, that's law. Ms. Reitzan would need to have evidence to prove that, but if something comes out your vehicle, you are liable for it, criminally and/or civilly.
Trick's got the evidence. Somebody's got to dive into that stuff.
And I think in rural localities, it's especially a problem, because, you know, in the suburbs, you have somebody coming to pick up your trash out of your backyard. But in the rural localities, we put it in the back of the pickup and carry it to the convenience site. And if you don't cover that load properly, you unintentionally, you know, lose some trash on the way to the sites. So I don't know if maybe, you know, education campaigns at the convenience sites to get people to cover their, their loads properly would be helpful. But we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars picking up litter every year. It's, it's one of those things that, you know, if I could wrap my head around how to, how to fix it and put that money to something better, you know, I think, I don't know.
Okay, is there any update on the Norris Bridge? It's the same thing.
The Norris Bridge, we're working on, you know, there's a replacement schedule, it's in the, it's in the plan for, I think it's 2036. We're currently working on an effort to decide what the new alignment will be, they're doing some geotechnical work in the river, and, you know, working on the new alignment. And that's the long term. Obviously, there'll be a lot more maintenance work that happens to the existing bridge to get it, you know, to the time that it's replaced. Is that the, is that your question, or, okay?
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Bryan?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I guess I'm confused, and I'm going to get it, no one will be asked on this, so I might as well just bring this up. So VDOT's going to spend the money to replace a one-lane bridge that may get used nine, eight, nine times a day, maybe. But yet we got Kissinger Springs Road that's used by 100 to 150 cars a day, and that can't be fixed.
Damn.
That, that really don't look good. And I know it's not you.
Right. The bridge funding is coming from state of good repair, federal dollars that are used for bridges. And we have an existing state-maintained bridge that is structurally deficient, so we have an obligation to fix it. At Kissinger Springs, we have a prescriptive easement over top of a dam that we do not own. If the landowner, or somebody on the landowner's path would like to repair the dam, then we will put the road back in the prescriptive easement. So it's, I see where the frustration is, but it's just, you know, we don't, we don't own the dam, and we're not going to take responsibility for the dam. We do own the bridge, and we're taking responsibility for the bridge.
Does VDOT build roads over dams for dams that the state does not own, that you're aware of?
No, not to my knowledge.
I wouldn't think so.
Anything else? Stoll?
One pothole to repair, I found it this morning Tuesday. It's on Crane's Creek Harbor Drive, which is off of Sandy Point Road 666. It's about 200 feet off of Sandy Point Road, right in the middle.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jet? Mr. Beal, I don't have anything.
One other thing, water, it's right on 609, when you turn on 609, water's standing.
Right, the intersection of 200 and 609?
Right.
It stands more down in the 200 to 300 block. There are some culverts that need to be cleaned out if they ever, or they've collapsed. And right by Leroy Cuffey's, when you get a heavy rain, you got water going out into the center of the road.
They have that bike truck the next two weeks, so I'll get them to check that.
Yeah, the question is whether the, because that was a federal road under federal funding, so they should have put in culverts. But like I said, they are stopped up so bad, there is no culvert, just for all practical purposes.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Beal, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right, our next item on the agenda is the update from Northumberland County Schools. Dr. Warger?
Good evening, Chairman Haney and supervisors. For our updates this evening, I wanted to start out with our updated weekly newsletter. On page one, excuse me, you can see that NBC News showcased Northumberland's new construction project last evening on the national news. You'll see a couple of snapshots from that there, and we were very pleased with that coverage. On pages one and two, you will see that a middle school student placed first in our VSBAR contest. Her piece is on page two, that's Gabrielle Burnett, who placed first in the contest. So her art will be hung in Charlottesville in the VSBAR office. At the bottom of page two, you have an SAT announcement. We are offering the SAT during the school day rather than on a Saturday, and that will be April 25, 2023. The SAT is open to all students, but specifically sophomores and juniors are encouraged to take that. If you look at page three, you'll see that the elementary school kicked off One School, One Book, and this is a partnership to help increase reading at home. So all students are given a book, and they go home with specific reading selections per night that their families can read with their child, and then the school during the school day has activities with it as well. We participated in a tornado trail this week, that was on Tuesday, all three schools did that. On pages three and four, you'll see that you have information about Wolf Trap. We have a residency program with Wolf Trap this year at the elementary school, and they came and did activities with our first graders. On page four, the middle school recognized Students of the Month, and Students of the Month are recognized for demonstrating politeness, respect, integrity, determination, and excellence. If you look at page five, just a reminder that the Northern Neck Technical Center will offer an open house on March 15. Also at the bottom of page five, the Northumberland Department of Social Services will continue to host their annual Resource Family Fun Fair. That will be held on a Saturday, April 29, from 10 until 2. It's a fun event for families and students. On pages, on page six, you'll see the summer learning schedule for this coming summer. And we do have a school board meeting coming up this coming Monday, and we expect the school board, we're hoping that they will approve our budget proposal, as well as approve the calendar for next school year. The second document that I provided to the supervisors, that is from Ms. Tara Booth, our finance director. She is not here this evening, but she wanted to give you a corrected version of the salary. salary scales that she said she would give to you this evening. And that's, um, in response to our budget work session that we held about a week ago. And also, Mr. Tomlin, you had asked what was included in Fund Four at our budget work session. Um, we looked into that and Fund Four is comprised of the school nutrition director's salary and benefits as well as the school nutrition software. And that's the information that I have for you this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Warburg. Any, uh, excuse me, any board members have any questions for Dr. Warburg? Mr. Long?
No.
Mr. Brand?
No.
Mr. Tomlin?
Nope.
Mr. Jett?
No.
Dr. Warburg, thank you very much. Glad to see you again.
Thank you.
All right, and don't forget to, uh, set your clock ahead.
Will do. Thank you.
I wanna set it back. I wanna set it back.
Oh, leave it alone.
Yeah. All right. And next item on the agenda tonight is, uh, we have a year-end report from Stuart McKenzie. Stuart, anytime you want to start.
I'm gonna unmute my mic.
You want a mic?
No, I've got one. I just had to unmute it.
Okay.
We're good now. I'll dispense with the planning commission activity, uh, unless you're, uh, would like some details on that, but I'll get straight into the, uh, the activity, the board requests for the county. Uh, the board supervisors, Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Wetland Board considered a combined 53 request during the 2022 calendar year. Um, in 2022, the total estimated cost of construction was $60 million, 1,500,850.99, compared to $54,840,042.15 from 2021. The total estimated cost of construction showed an increase of approximately 9.4% from 2021 to 2022. Uh, there were 53, uh, single-family dwellings built, uh, in 2022, 12 modular buildings, uh, five, I'm sorry, five double wides, and three, three commercial buildings were built in 2022. The, um, by Magisterial District, there were 29 structures in Fairfield, 12 built in Heesville, 12 in Lottesburg, and 20 in Wacomico District. Um, and I can, I can detail the zoning if you're interested, but regarding permits and inspections, uh, the building and off, Building and Zoning Office handled an assortment of permits. There were 408 building permits, 311 mechanical permits, 425 electrical permits, and 140 plumbing permits. And there were approximately 2,040 building inspections conducted throughout the 2022 calendar year. Uh, if you have any questions or would like for me to go into more detail, I'd be glad to do that.
All right. Any board members have any questions?
No.
Mr. Long?
No.
Mr. Brand?
No.
Mr. Tomlin?
No.
Mr. Jett?
No.
Mr. McKenzie, very good report as usual. Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you.
All right, that's all of our presentations. Now, we have the, um, county administrator report, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Tadlock.
Sir, the first item I have is the building permit report. Uh, for the month of February, we had seven new structures. Total construction cost for the month is $5.7 million. Total construction cost year-to-date is approximately $11 million. Uh, it's approximately $2.2 million above this time last year. Next item I have is a proclamation for the American Red Cross, and be it proclaimed that Northumberland County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as American Red Cross Month in Northumberland County, and urges all citizens to support the programs and services of local American Red Cross organization by giving blood through volunteerism, assisting with fundraising efforts, donating to the organization, and by becoming an everyday hero.
All right.
Chairman, we approve this proclamation.
All right, we have a motion to have second.
Second.
Got a motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Next item I have is Roger McKinley on the Planning Commission, District Four. Uh, appointment is up, but he is willing to serve again.
I move that we reappoint him.
Second.
All right, got a motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, next item is Charles Williams', uh, appointment for the Planning Commission, District Five, uh, is expiring, and he is willing to serve again.
All right, I move that we reappoint him.
Second.
All right, got a motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And, uh, we'd just remind the board that we do have, uh, several vacancies on the Economic Development Commission, uh, Districts One, Two, Four, and Five. So, if you have anybody or thinking of anybody, um, we do need some appointments to that commission. Next item I have is regarding the loaded firearms. Um, we had this discussion last month, and the board had requested some additional information on that, how it pertained to, uh, the definition of a loaded firearm. And I know, uh, the county attorney, Mr. Gregory, has been doing some additional research and speaking to the Commonwealth's Attorney, Ms. Wrightson, as well. So, I'd turn that over to Mr. Gregory.
Mr. Gregory?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Tadlock. Uh, what, this arose from an existing county ordinance in Chapter 72 of the county code regarding firearms. There's two code sections, Section 72 dash four and 72 dash seven, that contain in them references to state code provisions that have been repealed. What the General Assembly did was repeal Sections 18.2 dash 287 point one and 18.2 dash 287 from the Code of Virginia. But at that time, what, what they did was not just repeal those code sections, but they essentially moved those code sections, uh, re-promulgated, uh, new code sections and placed them in the, uh, Title 15.2, which is the title of the code governing local governments. Okay? So, they, uh, and what those, those two code sections did was authorize local governments to prohibit, uh, the transport possession or carrying of loaded shotguns or rifles, firearms in any vehicle on public streets, roads, or highways within a locality. So, and then the other code section, um, 15.2, I'm sorry, that was 15.2 dash 915.2. Um, and then the other code section, well, the 15.2 915.2 replaced Section 18.2 dash 287, which was in the reference in Section 72.4. Uh, in 72.7, uh, the new code provision replacing 18.2 287, uh, the new code provision is Virginia Code Section 15.2 1209.1, which authorizes governing bodies of any county to adopt an ordinance making it unlawful for any person to carry or have in his possession for the purpose of hunting while on any part of a public highway within such county a loaded firearm when such person is not authorized to hunt on the private property on both sides of the highway along which he is standing or walking. So, those, those code, those state code sections were changed. So, if you want to update the code, your, the county code, you would simply strike the references to, uh, those repealed code sections and replace the reference with the new code section. But I understand that the question is, uh, well, what constitutes a loaded firearm? Because I understand that the local Department of Wildlife Resources Conservation Police Officer is, has apparently been citing people with violations of these local ordinances for, uh, traveling the roadways with, with what are considered loaded firearms. So, the question is, what, what is a loaded firearm? Well, the loaded firearm is not defined in the, in the Code of Virginia, as far as I can tell. Um, there is a definition of loaded firearm that is, uh, included in the Department of Wildlife Resources Annual Handbook of State Laws and Regulations, which is required, which the, the agency is required to publish every year, uh, for the, for the public information. Um, and the DWR includes in that handbook a definition of a loaded firearm, and that is defined as a firearm in which ammunition is chambered or loaded in the magazine or clip and is engaged or partially engaged in a firearm. So, that's DWR's definition of what a loaded firearm is. And in, in absence of any other definition, um, that's, that's what it, what it is. That's what it's considered under the law. And in fact, there's another state code section, 29.1 dash 504, which in part states that courts of the Commonwealth shall take judicial notice of all laws and regulations contained in the DWR, uh, publication in that handbook. Um, so, it's, in the absence of any other guidance, it's my view that a court in looking at, in trying to determine what a loaded firearm is, would probably first go to that state handbook, that DWR handbook that defines it. Um, I'm not, I did look, uh, um, there's, uh, there's very little other statutory guidance on what is a loaded firearm. Uh, there's a sta, there's a federal, uh, uh, statute that defines it, um, but that's in the, in the context of, I believe, the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, and it also defines it as similarly, as in a, a firearm with a, uh, a, a round in the magazine or in the, um, or in the chamber, either one. But other than that, there's not a whole lot out there. So, uh, your options, I think, if, if you're concerned about this and the enforcement implications, um, number one, the ordinance, I believe, can still be enforced as-is, uh, and even though it contains a reference to a repealed statute, because you still, under the, you still had, the county still has the statutory authority to promulgate an ordinance, and it can still be enforced. Um, but if you, if you want to update the ordinance, and I recommend it, you, we could, we could do that very easily by replacing those references and bring it to you, and you could advertise those ordinance amendments, and then we'll come back and you could approve them, very simple. Um, DWR requires, uh, that you submit updates to your ordinances, uh, for the sake of including them in that publication by May 1st of each year. So, if you want to do that, next month is the time to do that. Um, I don't think that DW, DWR right now includes references to local ordinances and, and what each county prohibits or allow, or might allow.
They, they reference it.
Yes, they do.
They have a table that goes over.
That's right. So, I don't think, if you do nothing, I don't think that would change. I think they would continue to, to publish it as-is, but if you updated it, you would simply send, the, the prudent thing to do would just, to be to send them an update, but of course, then if you did what, what I'm suggesting, nothing would then change. If you're concerned about, about how this is being enforced, um, or why, or whatever, um, and you, you no longer want to prohibit this, the, the carrying of loaded shotguns or rifles, um, in, in vehicles, um, then you could repeal the ordinance, in which case it would, it would not be enforced anymore. Um, that's, you're the policymaking body in the county, um, and so it's up to you. But I would, uh, I would, you know, strongly urge you to, to consider that you have the ordinance on the books for a reason, and that's probably a pretty good reason. But, um, I did speak with Commonwealth's Attorney Jane Wrightson to get her input on it. Um, we talked through all of these issues. I believe she is here tonight and is, is happy to, to, to answer any questions or, or speak to you if you'd like. Um, I think she and I are on the same page in our understanding of the state law and how it interplays with your local ordinance and, and the, uh, DWR definition. Um, but I don't want to put words in her mouth, and she, she can answer those questions herself. But, um, happy to help any way I can and answer any questions if I, if I might.
Second, Eric.
Yes, sir.
Well, if we updated to the current code section, but then added language, what North umberland County assumes the definition to be?
Uh, well, I would, well, if, if you, if the county tried to define what a loaded firearm is, contrary to what DWR has promulgated, has, has defined it as, so you would have two conflicting definitions.
Well, there is a code section that says 8.0133388 says judicial notice of public, I mean, uh, political subdivisions. So, you'd have two judicial notices.
Well, I, I haven't looked at that precise code section.
Yeah, I know. 8.01 dash 388.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, I, I would, based upon what you're telling me, I think it's, 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 it is a state, a fair statement of law that courts always take judicial notice of local laws.
With that ordinance, they should take notice of what?
Yeah.
That's, that's a state definition. They're trying to tell us what the definition is, but we should be able to change it to do, to follow what was the interpretation.
Uh, I suppose you could, the county could promulgate its own unique definition of what a loaded firearm is. Uh, then you would have two conflicting definitions, and a court would probably, um, Commonwealth's Attorney Wrightson is here, but it would probably render the local ordinance unenforceable because somebody, a defendant in a case, would always have the defense that, well, the state says it's this, you say it's that, and so how are you gonna enforce it? And a court, I mean, I don't, you never know what a court's gonna do, but a court probably is gonna take the safe route and throw it out. So, it would render the ordinance virtually unenforceable.
Ms. Wright, would you mind come forward, please?
Unmuddy these waters.
Your comments, please.
Well, I, I agree that, to backtrack a little bit, I'm not aware of any criminal statute in Virginia that, that where loaded firearm is an element. I'm pretty sure there isn't. So, I, I'm not familiar with any kind of definition beyond the, the, um, whatever they're calling themselves now.
Department of Wildlife Resources.
Yes.
Game wardens.
Sorry. Um, they're still gaming inland fisheries, it seems, but anyway, DWR. Um, that's the only one that, that I'm aware of that's, that's in the Virginia code. I think, um, obviously, uh, the, the board can, um, just get rid of that ordinance completely. I, I do think that if you, if you set up a situation where you've got, um, the, you've got a definition that, that the county is putting in its ordinance that is in conflict with the people's, the, the definition that is being utilized by the people who are enforcing that ordinance, you're gonna get some issues in court that, um, again, are gonna render that ordinance basically unenforceable. I, I think you're, you're gonna have a conflict between the two. And my experience with judges and courts is that, that it's just not gonna be enforced if, if that's where you, if that's what you end up doing. Uh, I, I don't have a dog in this fight, and I really don't. I mean, I think you all should do whatever you think is appropriate, but I do think that having a definite, having this, the ordinance, but with a different definition than DWR is using in the enforcement of it everywhere else, and even here, is it gonna be, you're gonna have a problem with that. You're gonna, it's gonna render this, the defendant's gonna say, oh, oh, well, you know, I'm confused, there's conflict. The judge is gonna say, bleh, and, and that's gonna be the end of it. I mean, you know, Mr. Tomlin, you've been in court often enough.
Defendants love confusion.
Sure. And, and that's how it's gonna play out. So, you'll effectively not have an ordinance if you do that, in my opinion.
All right. Thank you. Thank you on that part.
A good one.
Don't go anywhere. Let me ask some more questions.
Okay.
All right. Any board members have any other questions?
The only thing that, I don't, I leave where it is now, the way they're interpreting the law. I don't know when it changed, if it was changed, always been like it or what. This county for years, it went back to when, um, Dee Hudnall was appointed a special police for this county.
Edna Barber was Commonwealth Attorney.
Who?
Edna Barber.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
And he defined that a loaded gun made us stand in this, in a boardroom that, uh, uh... a loaded gun, it had to be in the chamber. As far as I know, that's what the county's been going by.
I can't say, I've been Commonwealth's Attorney for almost fourteen years now, and I don't know that I've ever had anybody prosecuted anybody for it. I'm sure somebody's had a ticket for it, but I don't think that issue's come up. My understanding, if you would just ask me, would have been the, what you would call the traditional definition. Um, and I was not aware until the issue came up here.
Yeah.
That there was, in fact, a, um, a, um, ruling that, or a, that they had promulgated this.
Right, same with, hey, I wasn't aware of it, kind of caught, uh.
I, I, I just didn't know that, because it does, it just doesn't come up. But apparently they are now writing a lot of tickets for it, and, um...
I guess what I feel like, I feel like DWR backed us into a corner, but we can't leave it like it is, there's no shell in the chamber. It's gotta be all or none.
Well, the other thing that we can do, because I think this is a cycle, the General Assembly is redoing their game hunting law violations, ask them to consider the same language unless otherwise changed or a different interpretation by the county. If they put that language, that would put us in the right place.
Well, certainly, if, if it can, ideally, it would be changed at the DWR.
Yeah.
Level, and that would take some sort of political input.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that if, if we set up a conflict, it's going to be very difficult to, um, enforce it at all.
Yeah.
I, I think it will effectively end up with no ordinance. It'll be on books, but it will be, um, impossible to enforce. But I, I, I was not aware until this sort of surfaced that, that the, uh, DWR had promulgated that definition. I, I thought it was a, the more common sense, what I perceived to be the more common sense, uh, definition of a loaded firearm. Since it's a safety, I mean, it's a safety issue, and if you don't have a round in the chamber, then it's... So I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't have an answer for you. All I can tell you is I, I think it's not going to be effective to put a separate definition in unless, um, you can get it changed at the, at the regulatory level.
I just think it's more dangerous to, to ask someone to unload and load a gun five and six times a day. To me, that's more dangerous than having it loaded, having it on the, the safety on, and having it where it needs to be. I mean, each and every time that you load it and you unload it, it's a risk.
Sure.
Right down in itself, and, you know...
I don't necessarily disagree with you. I'm just telling you that, you know, if, if, if you set up a different definition, you're going to have enforcement problems.
Right.
I don't, I'm not weighing in on.
Right, I understand.
What ought to be done.
Right.
Y'all are the legislature. I'm the executive.
All right, any other comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we hold a public hearing to remove this ordinance from our, from that, which would permit loaded guns on highways, and that would be what line has turned Richmond County to, the Joining Counties have had, with no apparent ramifications hurt in the incidents that I know of.
Okay. Have second.
Second. But we, is this going to deal with the other ordinance about hunting within the right-of-way? Because if a person has a loaded firearm, gets out of their vehicle, whatever kind of vehicle, and then is in the road, that meets the definition by code of taking, attempting to take, or assisting others to take game. So if they've got a loaded gun and they're going to get across the road, then they are in violation of a separate game law violation.
How does that work, Eric?
Oh, well, there are two separate ordinances.
No, this is state code, the one I'm talking about. It's state code twenty-nine point whatever, that the definition of hunting is taking, assisting in taking, or taking, attempting to take, or assisting others. That's the definition.
Right.
Code of Virginia, twenty-nine point whatever.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were referencing the state code.
Yeah, there's state code difference.
Right.
That's, that's the issue between loaded within the right-of-way. As our current ordinance, you cannot hunt within the right-of-way. So do you take both ordinances off, or keep one, but then you might set somebody else up for hunting within the road? Because if they're stopped and running across the road, they are hunting or attempting to take by def, by the code of Virginia's definition.
Mr. Jett, would you restate your motion to me just one more time, please?
May I ask to repeal that, what was it, seventy-seven?
It's, uh...
Seventy-two in the book?
Uh, it's County Code Section seventy-two dash four, transport or possession of loaded shotgun or rifle. I believe that's the one you're talking about.
Yeah.
Uh, and so you, your motion is, as I understand it, is to advertise a repeal of County Code Section seventy-two dash four.
Right.
There's the other County Code section, uh, in Article three of Chapter seventy-two, that's Section seventy-two dash seven, that's unlawful possession. And that states, just to be clear, uh, in pertinent part, aside from a reference to the repealed State Code section, "It shall be unlawful for any person to carry or have in his or her possession while on any part of a public highway within Northumberland County a loaded firearm when such person is not authorized to hunt on private property on both sides of the highway along which he or she is standing or walking." I believe that that's a, seems to be a bit of a separate issue.
But that goes back to the loaded firearms and not the rifles and shotguns that the other one, I got yous. The other one, tell you right to rifles and shotguns, doesn't it?
That's right. And each, each, each local ordinance provision is based upon authority granted by two separate State Code sections.
But I see what Tom is talking about, but does that classify that you're hunting, you're just going down the road? Or you get out, you're not supposed to be on the right-of-way when you park anyway to get out?
Yeah, Tommy, you were talking, babe, you're going down a highway, your gun's loaded, you're going to be in violation.
I'm less concerned about that than, let's assume we take away the loaded firearm. Let's assume that's gone. So thus, a person could ride down the road with a loaded shotgun rifle. Pistols are a different ballgame because of concealed weapons, et cetera. That's, it's rifles and shotguns we're talking about. If we repeal the provision of a loaded firearm, but then they get out of their vehicle to go hunting, the definition of hunting twenty-nine point one one hundred, the definition specifically includes the act of taking or attempted to take. So if you're getting out of your vehicle with a loaded firearm, from A to Z, to B, you're crossing under the ordinance that is not being proposed to repeal, you're hunting to get to there. Because you're attempting to take.
I think that's a fair, fair statement.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor. Any other discussion on to it? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Nay, I view this as a, a safety regulation.
All right, and the motion passes four to one.
Okay, uh, that was just to repeal seventy-two dash four.
Yes.
Okay. That's easy to do.
All right, now, there's another one on there. Do we need to revisit that also?
That's the one Mr. Tomlin was just talking about, Section seventy-two dash seven. That just deals with the unlawful possession, and that, that references, again, a repealed provision in State Code. Um, the new provision is fifteen point two dash twelve oh nine point one, and, uh, so I would reckon, if you, if you want to consider keeping that ordinance, then I would suggest that you, um, update the code reference, and that's fairly easy to do.
Should leave that one in.
Uh, if, if you want to leave, if you want to keep that ordinance on the books, I would recommend updating the, the reference to state law.
All right, what's the pleasure to board?
Yeah, I agree. We need to update.
I'd really, keep, keep that one in.
An update.
Keep it as is?
Well, just updated, you said.
Update.
Yes, sir, just to update the, to the new State Code reference.
All right. All right, we have a motion. Do I have second?
I second.
All right, we have motion to second. Any other discussion there? Mr. Tomlin, you have anything to say again?
Well, you can, removing the firearm piece, there's, if they are hunting within the right-of-way by a separate ordinance we have, they could be, they would, in my opinion, by the code of Virginia's interpretation or definition of hunting, they'd be in violation of that one. Attent, taking or attempting to take.
Well, I don't know if it just, just because the gun's loaded, doesn't necessarily mean they're attempting to take.
If a person sees a wild game, they stop the truck, get out and go...
Oh, and see the deer, that's a different story.
But that's, that's, that's the reality, what we got to face.
All right, but what, now, even if there is no game there, and a gun is loaded, they can still be considered the same thing.
Could they?
Yeah, because you can't, you, the, if the game warden came along at that time, you could say, well, the deer just ran. You can't prove that it was there.
That's a proof issue. That's the Commonwealth burden.
Yeah.
You could, you could argue this point several different ways. I like to still, I get into my truck, my gun's loaded, I'm walking to a stand. I could be in that stand three hours before I see anything.
Yeah.
It's, it's no intent for me, when I get into my truck, that I'm going to pull the trigger, that something's going to be there. So, I mean, you could look at that point, know what you want. I mean, it's, I think, you know, if we have any, uh, difference of opinions on that, I think the best thing we can do is talk to one of the game wardens and have him come in and give his opinion on that, and go from there.
Is that possible, to get one of the game wardens come in?
We can certainly reach out to them and see what we can find out.
Is that what the board would like to do?
I believe that would...
You already got one, one ordinance that's going to be advertised, and that's the time to have them there.
Yeah, that would be the time, and let them give a opinion right then.
Right.
Could you, could you see if that could be done?
Yes, sir.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. All right, we got that one done. Mr. Tadlock?
All right, next item I have is, um, last month, the board had considered, uh, paving a portion of the parking lot at the old quarters building, and, uh, the board did move forward with that, but asked to look into it further. And what I would ask is that, after we investigated further, not all the paperwork is in order, so I would ask the board to rescind that motion and then go with, uh, CW Davis Contractors in the amount of eighteen thousand four seventy, if the board wishes to still move forward with that.
CW Davis is a higher bid?
They were.
And the reason the other?
Uh, DPOR, we could not find a contractor's license.
Yeah, what'd you say, Luttrell?
Contractor's license.
I think it was, were they in the process of trying to get it?
They, they are in the process of trying to...
Process of trying to get it, so it's up to the board.
Well, you submit a contract or a bid without a license, that's a problem, I think, with the Board of Contractors.
Yeah.
So I move that we rescind our prior motion and go with CW Davis, who is fully licensed and does a good job, by the way.
I second that. I, I got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, have several supplemental appropriations. Uh, first one is in the amount of four hundred and eighty-five dollars, twenty-nine cent, uh, to thirty-one oh two, thirty-twelve for V-Corp reimbursement.
All right, pleasure to board.
Still moving.
Second. Got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, next one is appropriation to account number thirty-one oh two, one thousand six, in the amount of seven hundred sixty-nine dollars fifty cent for the reimbursement of ballgames.
Still moving.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next one is thirty-one oh two, thirty-twelve, in the amount of five thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars fifty-eight cent for the two thousand sixteen Excor deer strike.
Still moving.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next one is, um, need to transfer our monies to the Schools Capital Improvement Fund, from the general fund, uh, let's see, in the amount of ninety-one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for the school bus garage roof replacement.
Still move.
I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next one is a supplemental appropriation for the hidden property purchase in the amount of seventeen thousand fifteen dollars sixty-seven cent to ninety-one oh three, seven thousand nineteen.
Still move.
All right, I got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all, uh, say aye.
Aye.
And that property has been reported, and that was with the two other counties.
Okay.
Um, need a motion to approve the appointment of Calvin Balderson as the Northumberland County's representative to the PIMS Operations Committee, um, and also, as it was set up some years back, uh, the alternate is the president of each of the squads on a rotating basis.
Still move. Second.
All right, got a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, you have in your packet some information from various counties, including ours, on the county fee schedule. Um, as we go through the budget, we will be looking at our fee schedule to see if any adjustments are needed, uh, due to increasing costs with advertising and/or staff time to review those applications. Also in your budget, or in your packet, is a budget calendar. Um, it's just a schedule of, of some dates, possible dates for a meeting on the, the budget as that gets kicked off. The last item I have is related to the, uh, health insurance, and as proposed, this just is related for full-time, uh, employees. And as in years past, we've been trying to hold the amount that the county employees have been paying, because that has been one of the, uh, factors that we've been losing some of our staff to other localities. Um, so this, this proposal does keep the employee, uh, at the same level. Uh, the county does pick up the additional cost. We did see a nine point nine percent increase in our health insurance rates, and, uh, the total additional cost would be approximately ninety-eight thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty cent. Now, that's just a guesstimate. Um, last week, you did have a presentation by the school board. Uh, they were looking at the possibility of, um, including school bus drivers, uh, in the health insurance. The school bus drivers are classified as part-time. Uh, in order for them to do that, the county would also have to offer part-time employees health insurance. That is not something that we've done before, um, and this proposal does not reflect that. We can try to answer any questions that you may have, or try to get additional information that the board may have.
What's the preliminary estimate of the budget implications for covering part-time employees?
Um, the schools was, uh, about three hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, bus drivers. For the county, uh, we are looking at an additional thirty-six to forty, uh, additional people. Um, and I think when we ran the numbers, it was about three hundred and twenty, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars additional. Now, that's if everybody takes that.
Right.
Um, the other impact that the board may see is that, as long as we have, uh, maintain a seventy-five percent participation rate in our total population, of which the, um, the health insurance is being offered to, then we do not have to, uh, pay for the dependent care. then we do not have to pay for the dependent care, or a portion of the dependent care. We are currently at seventy-eight percent right now. So, adding additional people to a group that may or may not participate may, may hurt our numbers, and we don't have that figure nailed down.
And you won't have that until such time as it's offered.
That's correct.
What, do, is there any definition of a part-time employee?
It, it would all depend on how you have it stated in your personnel policy, I think would be my understanding, what local choice is related to.
Now, if any employee, part-time or otherwise, works more than twenty-nine hours by other regulations and codes, we have to provide them health insurance.
That's correct.
Obviously, something less than twenty-nine hours.
Correct.
But if you have a person who's part-time, works one day a week, which is conceivably, you know, twenty percent, they could get either a fractional share or a full share of health insurance.
And you could do a different setup for part-time employees, but there again, if you do a higher cost, the individuals that would participate in that may not be, it may throw your numbers off.
And the figures that you've got, would the insurance company have to then take the new figures to come up with a new figures? I mean, the new number of employees to come up with new figures, or would these figures hold?
You could use these figures for your full-time, and actually, I guess you could use those for your part-time. I'm sorry. Or, yeah, you have to at least fifty percent for the, the part-time.
All right. But those figures could change if you come under seventy-five percent, right? That's what, that's.
That's, that's the unknown.
That's unknown, yeah.
All right, any comments from the board? Mr. Tadlock, do you need action tonight, or?
We do need action fairly soon. Mary has to get this information in by April first, so I don't wanna jam her up by delaying it too, too long.
All right, what's the pleasure to board then? Let's see.
Well, you asking for insurance for part-time, right? Is that, is that what you?
All I was stating is that the, the school division was asking for part-time. The county has not done part-time, but in order for the school division to do part-time, then the county, since they, I used the word piggyback, since they piggyback off of our policy, the county would have to offer the part-time insurance. So, in, yes, in order for them to offer the part-time.
Well, my motion is that we offer the part-time insurance.
Mr. Tadlock, have you had time enough to research all of this, to see exactly what it's gonna cost us and?
Nope.
Everything. I know, I know it was just sprung on you here a week ago.
Yeah, we, we just learned about it last, last week.
Yeah.
So, we, in the meantime, we have been trying to run some numbers. But part of that, you're not gonna know what that impact to that seventy-five percent is gonna be until you actually get, offer that to the, the employees.
When do you need this information? When do you need our decisions?
Soon as possible.
It, it has to be turned in by April first, so.
We're gonna meet on March twenty-second. I'm looking at your schedule.
Well, I, I think we had some, some dates even next week.
Okay.
Yeah, good dates next week, too.
March fifteenth, so I don't know, that was just a budget work session regarding the school budget, if, if the board would like. I mean, we could try and pull as best as we can some information together for part-time.
That would, that would help you a lot more if you had more additional time, wouldn't it?
But, oh, the time.
To gather information and everything, and, and we, we were probably gonna be meeting next week.
Yeah, there again, some of that is gonna still be unknown until you actually offer it, and you have the individual sign up to participate. But we can run some numbers to see what our, what our threshold might be, too.
All right.
I wanna make sure we get it, get it in time where we can take part, you know? We don't wanna wait around. This is important for one reason. This is a way to keep good people. By offering this insurance.
All right, Mr. Long, you have a motion on the floor. You don't have a second. Do you wanna withdraw your motion for now?
Wait, you saying we got, we have a meeting on the fifteenth, right?
If, if the board, that was just a suggested date, if the board wishes to.
Would that be, would that be enough time?
We, we can try and pull some more information. I think Ms. Dawson had a comment.
On the participation rate, it just, when we start offering part-time, if we do that, it's gonna be, we have every employee that you're gonna classify as part-time, because you're gonna have to come up with a code, you're gonna have to come up with a definition for who is eligible.
Yep.
For part-time, you put in the personnel policy. It's gonna be too hard. You wanna do personnel policy, and you're gonna have to do that, so we'll know who to offer. Then that's when we'll get our total number of employees versus who actually participates, and that's how we get our participation right there. If we fall under that seventy-five percent, we're gonna be paying additional.
Well, I know you wouldn't be able to pull all the information that we need by the fifteenth, but would that, if we vote on the fifteenth, would that be sufficient?
I can get the information by fifteen.
Because would there have to be one uniform definition of what a part-time employee is? Or could, say, the school system have a one definition, and the county have one definition?
They're gonna have to update their personnel policy.
But, I mean, can you have different definitions of a part-time, since it's one policy, so to speak?
All right, we can follow up on that and have that for the fifteenth as well.
Because I can see potentially, if you really wanna get benefits, you got a real low threshold of part-time, and then you'd be, have one quote-unquote more conservative, and then you could have differences, and you may see people jumping ship from one side to the other, much less going out. I mean, this is haste next waste right now. The legitimacy of doing it is one thing, but we have insufficient information to make a valid conscientious decision all the way around, in my opinion.
Well, I'm saying that I'm willing to withdraw my motion, but I'm, I would like to make it on the fifteenth. Like, we don't have a whole lot of time to make this decision.
Well, this thing was just presented to us last Wednesday.
Well, I'm, I would vote on.
I mean, they laid the dollar short. It's not fair to the county to make this kind of decision.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion next week. I'll back off this week, but I'm gonna make one.
So, so you're gonna withdraw your motion, Mr. Long? All right. Is that okay if you, Mr. Tadlock?
We'll get together and see what information we can get for the board, and have that for you all next week.
All right, thank you.
What time next week? Five-thirty, what, what time was it?
We haven't set those dates yet.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Tadlock?
Could you possibly send in a survey on the part, to part-time people that would be interested in helping some?
Yeah, it would depend on how you define it, too, I guess.
Yeah, I understand that. That's why we're trying to get this information together, to have as much as we can to make a decision, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tadlock.
Yes, sir.
Next item on our agenda is the Board of Supervisors items. Do we have approval of the check roster?
I know that we approve.
I got a motion to have second.
Second.
All right, motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. All right, now we have more comments, and I'll start with Mr. Long.
I don't have it at this time.
Mr. Bryan?
Um, um, Lotsburg Trash Site, did you contact them to boot cleaning up behind the fence? Because there's still a lot of plastic and trash behind the fence, up in the trees.
I talked to Waste Management, and they, the gentleman was Rob, I'm not gonna try to pronounce his last name, but he did pass that information on to Vince Jamison, the site director, so.
That's all I got.
All you got. Mr. Tomlin?
Got one thing. I would request that Chief Balderson and the Sheriff's Office look at whether our emergency medical dispatch program needs to be updated, one, and then in light of the new law that's coming fully effective July one, two thousand twenty-four, that requires dispatching centers to have telecommunicator CPR. And that's a state requirement, has to be trained in annual or periodic training to do so. Other words, somebody calls in, and they say they, they meet the criteria for doing CPR. They're supposed to be able to coach them over the phone to do that until EMS can get there, or some other first responder. But we need to make sure our Sheriff's Office Dispatch Center will be beating that new code. You can request Rescue Squad Assistance Fund money for this, you know, up to fifty percent maybe. But it is a code requirement effective actually January one, but you're supposed to have everything fully in place July one, two thousand twenty-four. So, I request Chief Balderson and the Sheriff's Office, see where we are in terms of the compliance with that code and any update on EMD.
All right.
And I'll make that as a motion if we need it.
All right, Thomas made his motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Mr. Jett?
No, no.
I don't have any comments at this time. All right, our next item is we need to convene into a closed meeting.
Do you wanna do that after our public hearing?
That is my question, and just getting ready to make a question on that.
Given the size of our crowd sitting here, I don't think they wanna sit here and wait for us to go with that.
I don't either.
I would ask that we defer that until after our public hearing.
That's fine with me. How about a public comment?
No, I think we'd normally keep that up front.
Keep that up front. All right, we're gonna do our closed meeting at the, at the end of our public comment, I mean, in our public hearings. As soon as Morgan gets back with the sign-up sheet. Hey, Morgan. All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I will open the public comment period. The first person I have that's signed up tonight is Maurice Johnson.
It is tonight. Do you know what a pre-trial detainee is? Any of you? Innocent. Pre-trial detainee is innocent. That's such a constitutional right, remain intact. Detention must be conducted in accordance with the U.S. Constitution. Over the course of the ongoing J-six saga, these detainees have had their first, fourth, fifth, sixth, and eighth amendment rights stolen from them. For these, there has been no speedy trial. They have suffered many abuses. In their detention and in opposition to the Constitution, they have been punished, direct violation of the Sixth Amendment. These violations of constitutional rights are unrecoverable. NNRJ Board, rather than taking public complaints seriously and looking into these matters, instead having chosen to circle the wagons in defense of a single source of the entire thing, claiming it's all a nothing burger. Nothing is wrong. Nothing to see here. But as mentioned previously, we do have proof. Tonight, I'm gonna provide you with a little, a very small piece of proof in the form of an email exchange. But first, I have to point out that if these detainees were arrested for state, the state of Virginia charges, nineteen point two of the Virginia Code Criminal Procedures would have had them out over a year and a half ago. But still we go. And with all of that being said, if you'll let me approach, I can take these and hand them out to the five of you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, finally, I've given you a little bit, but I also encourage you all to read the most recent release of the Northern Next Sentinel. But in truth, this whole thing is extremely painful. To imagine here in the United States, that any elected official would refuse to look into possible violations of the Constitution. It's even more difficult to imagine that such a person that doesn't wanna support the Constitution is actually qualified to hold office. The NNRJ Board exists solely for the purpose of oversight, in theory. We're still waiting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, our next person on the sign-up sheet is Robin Tur- Turro. I hope I got that right.
Chiro.
Chiro.
Close. Hi, my name is Robin Chiro, and I'm a licensed civil engineer in the state of Virginia. I used to be a Board of Supervisor elected official before, previously, and was also a county engineer before. I live in two fifty Wy Comico Point Road in Heesville. And I'm sorry that I missed your county school budget hearing, your joint work session that you had, and that's when I wanted to present this, so I apologize, but I wasn't able to make the rescheduling meeting. I would like to request that perhaps next budget cycle, that funds be dedicated to the education of high school students by the County Sheriff's Department concerning the new generation of human trafficking in our schools. We all think of human trafficking as we see it on TV, where illegal immigrants are brought to the United States and are threatened, both them and their families back home, and tortured into performing work for long arduous hours for very little money, if at all, while being kept in confined quarters with others being human trafficked. But there is a whole new generation of human trafficking existing within the United States of America, as well as within our own county of Northumberland. Would it surprise you that human trafficking occurs when human traffickers, under the guise of being classmates with children in high school, that they follow them throughout their career and into college, and then finally to their new employers once graduated? You might ask why or for what purpose. Well, high school kids now are armed with a college education, of course, that now make a good substantial income at their new employer. Unfortunately, our children are not aware that their new income can very easily be taken by the human traffickers who have hacked into their bank accounts, which is so easy now that everything is electronic, and also their company pay stubs, because most of those are online and direct deposit now, leading our children to believe that they are making less than what they are truly making, since pay stubs show less than the actual bank deposits. These criminals are capable of showing the pay stub amount in their bank accounts, both hard copy and online, as what was deposited instead of what was truly deposited, and of course, these criminals pocket the difference. This process is also used to hack into their credit cards, retirement funds, and life insurance funds. Supposedly, how that works for the credit card fraud is that these criminals charge items to our children's credit cards, which of course are not visible in their credit card statements, both on paper and online, similar to their act- similar to their actual income. In addition, they steal portions, if not all, of their credit card payments made. And the criminals are also able to show charges when our children either get their bill or pay online that are actually higher than what our children actually purchased. That way, the criminals can steal the amount over the actual charge. As far as the retirement funds and life insurance, well, the criminals just steal those funds, but have our children think they are still there, but on paper only, as it states on their statements and online. Because everything is online, this continues to happen. Well, if that's not enough, these human traffickers then hack into our children's cell phones, work phones, personal laptops, as well as their company laptops. The purpose of such is to hack into our children's employer's financial data. And you guessed it, to steal those funds in a similar manner as that of their personal funds. It must not be very difficult to lead employers to believe that funds are truly there on paper when they are not. Who would do such a thing or have the capabilities to perform these types of criminal acts? What would surprise you to know that our federal government, your taxpayer dollars at work, have hired these types of criminals? Now that the criminals have the funds from our children's current employer, the human trafficking must continue on. So the criminals initiate paperwork and the process of having our child fired from their employment in order for them to go on to the next employer. It can be done by various ways, from drugging their supervisor, planting personal documents on their work computer, to accuse them of stealing, those various kinds of things. But wait, how does our child's employer believe someone that just calls them up and states that they have stolen company property actually did so? That's really a good question. Well, it's because when the criminals call our children's employer to report the theft, they supposedly committed. The criminals state that they are IRS investigators and even sometimes FBI agents. They imply to our children's employer that they are under investigation already, which of course they are not, but they can get away with so much when they impersonate working for the federal government. Therefore, our child is fired from the employer and must now seek other employment. The criminals now, no, excuse me, that our child is now so poor, since they have very little funds, since they were not employed for very long by their previous employer, and they now have a mountain of debt from the thefts the criminals committed. Human trafficking. They will find employment quickly. But wait, the criminals want them to secure employment with a company that is profitable for them. So they do not let our children just secure employment that they may want or for a job that they feel they are well qualified for. It must be the biggest and the best company to steal from.
Ma'am?
Yes?
Time's up.
Okay.
Could you wrap it up real quick?
Just as once our children is that position, the cycle repeats itself. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, our next person to speak is Jim Penny.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jim Penny, 125 River Hill Road. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, and I hope you will take to heart the comments that I made. Before I get started, I'd like to thank Mr. Tomlin for his stewardship and leadership as he has performed supervisor representing 4th District for what, 28 years?
Four, 24.
Okay, 24. As a relatively new resident in Ophamun County, I've had several interactions with him over the past six, seven years, and have nothing but respect for him, his responsibilities with the responses and assistance he has given. Mr. Tomlin, thank you. The item I wish to bring to your attention is a study by the Institute of Local Self-Reliance that was published just this month, March 2023. It is called "The Dollar Store Invasion." Yeah. Didn't even lose my place. Communities are in revolt, but the chain's predatory tactics also call for federal action. A tad about the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. The Institute for Local Self-Reliance, the ILSR, is a national research and advocacy organization that partners with allies across the country to build an American economy driven by local priorities and accountable to people and the planet. Whether it's fighting back against the outsized power of monopolies like Amazon, ensuring high-quality, local-driven broadband service for all, or advocating to keep local renewable energy in the community that produced it, ISLR advocates for solutions that harness the power of citizens and communities. I'll read to you the beginning of "The Dollar Store Invasion." In 2021, nearly half of the new stores that opened in the U.S. were chain dollar stores, a degree of momentum with no parallel in the history of the retail industry. And by the way, this is footnoted throughout, and there's a footnote here referencing you to reference by. At the start of 2022, Dollar General and Dollar Tree, which owns Family Dollar, together operated more than 34,000 stores in the U.S., more than McDonald's, Starbucks, Target, and Walmart combined. Footnote number six. In cities, it is common to find dollar stores clustered by the dozen within certain neighborhoods. The two corporations operate more than 100 outlets in metro Atlanta. For example, primarily in the city's black neighborhoods on its south and west sides. Footnote number seven. Dollar stores have likewise overrun much of rural America. In some small towns, they seem to be the only retail left. Both corporations intend to get much bigger. Over the last four years, Dollar General has added 3,500 locations, opening more than 100 new stores across New York, 200 in Ohio, 300 in Texas, bringing its roster to more than 18,000 stores and cementing its status as the largest retailer in the U.S. by number of locations. By the end of 2022, Dollar General and Dollar Tree together were on track to open 1,700 new stores, and both report that they have identified many more locations. In the coming years, they plan to grow their combined empires to more than 51,000 outlets. Now, gentlemen, I'm not going to be reading anymore. Anything else in this report? I'll be sending the full 29-page PDF to your attention at your county email address. I hope you will read and take appropriate action to keep us from having regretted not taking action at this time. While I'm here, I'd also like to comment regarding the situation last year when you were opposed with the application to change the property zoning for the dollar store in Wycomico Church. Can I ask why the name of the tenant of that property was hidden and not announced? Secondly, why was transparency obscured to the public? I truly feel you did no justice to yourselves or to the county residents by doing this and subsequently call for revision to the county ordinance to always advise the public as to what is being proposed with full transparency. Thank you and have a good evening.
All right, our next person to speak is Ava Woolfram.
Board members, I inadvertently signed up on the wrong sheet. And if I could request, please, that I be moved to slot down to reference E. I can't speak, but I would rather, if you don't mind, prefer that I speak with the speakers who are going to address E. Is that permissible?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, our next person to speak is Stephen Trevasi. I'm losing four letters out of it. Can't quite make them out. Stephen Trevor?
Tivol.
Tivol?
Is that what it is?
Yeah, I'm assuming that's what it is. I got at least four or five letters I cannot make out.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Basically, I'm just in opposition to the trailer park that's been proposed or that is being proposed. A lot of things I think they still need to...
You gotta stop it. Yeah. Comment on the trailer park.
All right, yes.
Sorry, it's not the same?
No, sir. No, sir. That is later.
I'm sorry?
You can't comment on something that's coming up in the public hearing. This is just a public comment period, not concerning any public hearings. You'll get your chance a little bit later.
You have to wait.
I can sign you up on that sheet to talk later.
Yeah, you can wait. Make sure that's me.
All right. I'll get you down. All right. The next one is George Benjamin.
George Benjamin, 389 Sawmill Cove Drive, Heesville, Virginia. In the interest of moving this program forward, I relinquish my time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person to speak is John Prizella.
Joan.
Joan.
Oh, Joan? Okay.
Get your glasses, checkmate.
J O H N.
I would like to express my concern for conditional use permits for the two parcels of land that are going to be discussed for utility scales.
You can add yourself to that one also.
That's coming up later.
It's coming up.
You can talk about that when that hearing is opened.
When that hearing is open?
Yeah, this is the public comment period right now. You can talk about anything except for the public hearings that we're going to have tonight.
Okay.
So, you know, I can put your name on that list.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person is Perry Slater.
Yes, sir, probably.
Took that comment wrong. I signed the wrong sheet.
Okay.
Again.
All right, which one would you like to speak on?
Well, as far as zoning for a trailer park.
All right.
E, Jonah, E.
All right.
How about if we asked if anybody got anything else to discuss other than those two topics? The sign-up needs to be very plain. Whatever. Either that or we're going to have to put it back at the end again. Hate to do it just for that.
One more second. All right, get all these names down.
What can you pronounce it?
I think I got them half-straight. All right. That's everyone I have on the sign-up sheet tonight. Would anyone else like to speak in the public comment period? Yes, sir. Please come on up and state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is John Spurhausen, 72, Alabama, Bay Quarter Shores. Presently, I am the president of the Bay Quarter Shores HOA. We would like to bring to your attention tonight a problem, property that we have in Bay Quarter Shores. The property is on Coral Drive in Bay Quarter Shores. And due to the amount of trash, debris, appliances sprung onto the properties, and what appears are abandoned vehicles, which makes this property out of compliance with our HOA guidelines. We have attempted, over the last year, to contact the property owners by certified letters, which they've refused to sign for. In December, we contacted Supervisor Haney, which in turn asked your zoning official, Mr. Marson, to review the properties. Mr. Marson contacted Bay Quarter Shores to inform us that the county needed to send a certified letter to the owners before the county could act. That letter was also declined by the owners. This week, we were informed the owners were served and again refused to sign for the certified letter. But we were also told that the clock now has started for the owners to clean the properties up. In addition to, Bay Quarter Shores asked our legal counsel to approach this issue through the courts. We wanted to thank Mr. Haney and Mr. Marson for the county's involvement. And if there's any additional resources that Bay Quarter Shores could use from the county, we would appreciate it. You can contact us at info@bayquarteshores.org, and we'd be happy to entertain any additional resources that might be offered. I have a couple photographs. I'll pass it to Mr. Jett, and you can pass them around to take a look at the properties.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again.
All right, thank you too, sir. All right, anyone else like to speak tonight on anything that's not pertaining to our public hearings?
Good evening. When I was asking to do some things in the county, it was brought up to my attention about the money that the county was generating and was going to generate in cost efficient. And as I ride through the county, I've been a lifetime resident here. I would just like to ask the board of supervisors, how much money has the county spent renting the social service and health department building? I know we've been renting it for 46 years at least. It's something we need to consider, you know? We just pouring out money. We could have bought probably three buildings by this time in the money. So somebody needs to look at how we're spending county dollars, because they're tax dollars, and are we really wasting it or are we being efficient? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, would anyone else like to speak tonight? Anyone else like to speak? All right, would anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight?
Hi, my name is Laura McMillan, and I would like to speak.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, please.
I'm going to turn my video on. Forgive me, this is my first time doing the Zoom. And I'm not even sure if I'm in the proper setting for this. But my name is Laura McMillan, and I am, my husband and I currently own the property 159 Harbor Road in Oakville, Virginia. We are currently on our fourth year of ownership there. And at the moment, we occasionally use our home as a short-term rental with Airbnb and VRBO. And we rent our home last this past year for 39, which brought us to an occupancy rate of 8% of the time. My guests frequented the businesses in the area, did local shopping at restaurants, paid guest fees to Northumberland County, and this boosted the accounting. My target guests are families with children, because this is a very small home. All of my guests have been very kind and respectful towards the neighbors and property. However, some of the residents of the CBCC neighbors have harassed my guests and damaged personal property to the extent that I have had to call the police out to my home multiple times, and which residents were warned not to take the law into their own hands. The CBC residents or CBCC residents have lured children from the property, my children, out into the street to ask them questions about renovations that are doing at the home. They've had vehicles at my house. They've attempted to remove people from the beach, and it's been determined by a land survey that the CBCC owns a small portion of the beach and that the beach is what once was Beach Lane. Residents have been aggressive during civic association meetings. And I feel that the CBCC has misrepresented themselves to the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors, because they have stated many times that they've spent $10,000 or more on gravel, for road maintenance, do the hydric, but in fact, this is a yearly... They rotate the roads. But they have spent $30,000 in lawyer fees to scare property owners. Despite the unkindness that my family has received from some of the members there, we still make monetary donations and spend our time on neighborhood cleanup. we still make monetary donations and spend our time on neighborhood cleanup days. So I'm just making my presence known and would like to vote that we keep the short-term rental laws the same for when that time comes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the virtual world like to speak? Anyone else in the virtual world like to speak tonight? Anybody else move? All right. All right, since no one else wants to speak, I'm going to close the public hearings. I mean, the public comment period. I'm sorry. It's going to be a long night.
Just getting started. Just getting started.
Yeah, it's going to be a long one.
Take a short break.
Yep. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a, what do you want, five, 10 minutes?
Five or less.
All right. Number one, 10-minute recess. Back to order. Ladies and gentlemen?
Will we come back to order, please? Will we come back to order?
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call this meeting back to order now. Now we're going to start our public hearings tonight. And we have, we have one applicant that's been tabled tonight, and that's a request by the most Reverend Michael F. Budrich. So that has been tabled till, what, next month, Mr. Sadlock?
Yes, sir, they requested that to be tabled till April 13, 2023.
Okay.
At seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock, okay.
And due to the nature of that, we will go ahead and just re-advertise that for public hearing.
All right. All right, so our first item on the public hearings tonight is the, we had one that was tabled from our regular meeting on February the 9th, revision to the Northumberland County zoning ordinance. And Mr. McKenzie, would you take care of that? If there's anything you need to read now?
Oh, I thought we covered it in the last meeting.
All right.
I mean, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Yes, see, we had a public hearing on this, didn't we?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, so, all right, we've had a public hearing for the matters before the board. What's the pleasure of the board now?
Mr. McKenzie, we had the gentleman from the Department of Energy. Based upon his comments to you and to the board, what might need to be done to what has been proposed for us tonight?
Well, he had some issues with the R1, R2 prohibition that we did not expressly state that the small agricultural producers were exempt from that. So that was one thing that we needed to do. He suggested that regarding the decommissioning plan, we had to trigger to start the decommissioning process, and that was something we should add. So there's some work that needs to be done to make it comply with state code. Those are the two things that I can think off the top of my head.
There's also some wording with a siding agreement, too.
Yeah. Siding, what level is permitted at, too?
Right, well, I explained to him that revenue share is allowed with under 5 megawatts, but siding agreements are not allowed with under 5 megawatts. So the siding agreement for a small, less than 5-megawatt plant is not legally, we cannot require that, but we can negotiate through the conditional use process of a cash profit. So... But there does need to be some work to the ordinance to make it consistent with the state code and from the comments that Mr. Barry Hill gave us.
Any other questions? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that, since this is at most a floor, we can still do, we can always do, this is a conditional use permit. We can add conditions, whatever is suggested or to be included. I would move that we send this back to the planning commission to, based upon what's the Barry Hill's comments, and to make sure we're in compliance and to include some stuff that we need in there.
All right, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second? Any other discussion?
That still doesn't mean we cannot consider these things when and if it is approved.
That's correct.
Doesn't mean they don't happen. It's just like to get a good finished document to start with.
That's correct. All right, no other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Now, our first request tonight is a request by Stephen W. Jett. Mr. Marston, I'll let you take care of the rest of that.
Yes, sir, we have a request by Stephen W. Jett, owner and Old Glee Point LLC applicant, for a conditional use permit to allow a utility-scale solar energy facility on property owned A1 Agriculture. Property is shown as Tax Map parcel 36-1-63 and is located on Old Glen Road.
All right, board members have any comments? Right now? All right, is anyone here representing Mr. Jett? Or is Mr. Jett here, too?
Are we doing Old Glee Point as opposed to the folly?
This is folly.
That's, he mentioned Old Glee Point, though.
Oh, is that the one, is that the one you wanted?
That's the first public hearing item.
I'm going by what we've got on our agenda.
All right, well, we'll do Glee Point then.
All right.
All right, gentlemen. How y'all doing tonight? Introduce yourself, if you don't mind.
Yeah, good evening, my name is Eric Wallace. I'm an attorney for Pivot Energy here on behalf of the applicant. Joining me tonight are Rob Hickox from Pivot Energy, as well as Abe Bennett. And Mr. Cole Anderson with the Thrasher Group is our engineering architectural consultant who's here to available answer questions on the conditional use application. We prepared a brief presentation that, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hickox shortly here to describe the project. You know, both this project and the subsequent project that will be on the agenda tonight are 3-megawatt solar projects. They are good projects that are going to serve about 900 residential customers in the Dominion Energy Service territory, providing bill credits to those customers through a community solar program. If we have time, we'll get into that in a little bit more detail at the end of the presentation. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Hickox.
All right, thank you.
Hello again, my name is Rob Hickox with Pivot Energy. I just want to thank the board and staff for taking the time to review our projects. Pivot Energy headquartered in Denver, but as you can see, these are the states we operate in. Have a large presence in the Eastern Seaboard. So, we're a full-service company. We are the long-term owners and operators of these projects, not standard solar development flip. For the term of our lease with Mr. Jett, we will be the owners, operators, and maintainers of these sites. To the extent that any landscape issues, the general maintenance to repair and even the decommissioning will be run by Pivot Energy or our subs. But we will directly be, you know, partners for the community and work with you in any way to make any conditions. It's all that. So, is it okay if we talk about both projects since they're parallel?
One project at a time.
Okay. We're on a Glee first, so can we advance a couple of slides? Just, we've got a slide I believe coming up here. One more. Thank you. Yes, the Old Glee project off Old Glee Road, it's a 3-megawatt site. The actual leased area and the sole fenced-in area of the site will be 18.61 acres. Rough count of modules, each individual panel, 9,720. And it's a single-axis tracker-type system. It will follow the sun, so maximize its efficiency as the day goes on. This is the layout of the site. As you can see, as it parallels Old Glee, we have guardrails for protection in addition to our landscape plan, which provides for coverage. It's a... It is a multi-layered row of trees. And as the trees grow, they'll be about four foot, five foot in height. And as they grow up, they will provide coverage, so you will not be able to see the majority of the site. There also will be guardrails for safety protection, as well as other screening. Being, just based on the conditions we saw passed through today, chain-link fence, or we usually propose an agricultural-type fence, an ag fence with wooden posts. And if I may speak briefly to the conditions, we reviewed the conditions that were posted earlier this afternoon. And, you know, those are a robust set of conditions, but those are conditions that we can work with. The one change that we would like to request with respect to the proposed conditions for this project is the change from a chain-link fence to an ag fence, agricultural fence, which is what was described in the application. It's a relatively minor change, but it's, and Mr. Hickox can speak to it a little bit more specifically. It's just a different kind of fence that works well in these sort of agricultural applications. And I think will fit well with the site for this particular project. Can you describe a little bit of the fence? Yes, if you could go back one more slide. Apologies for it not being bigger, but that is actually the type of fence up in the right-hand corner. It's a square-linked fence instead of your standard diamond-chain link fence that you can see on most sites, or any kind of security fence. Wooden posts. Better documentation will be provided to the board. No problem, we could probably get cut sheets and other better pictures, live pictures, if that would help. And also below it is kind of the spacing that we plan for our vegetative buffer. Each tree in the rows and how they will interlock with each other and block the fence as they grow up. And one additional point I would like to flag regarding the permit application, one of the conditions involves the negotiation of a waiver payment agreement. We look forward to, you know, resolving that and arriving on acceptable terms to the county and to the company. As part of that, related to that, we'd like to request a, section 15.2-2232 requires a finding or a waiver of that requirement that the project is in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan for the county. And so we can address that now through a motion of the board to address that, or we can address that as part of that agreement. It's, we submitted a proposed agreement that included language to that effect, so I just wanted to call that additional point out to the board's attention.
All right, any other comments that you would like to make, or any other statements you'd like to make?
No, not at this time.
All right, any board members have any questions or comments at this time?
Have you seen the conditions?
All right, Mr. Marston, would you read the conditions?
Yes, sir. The conditional use permit shall expire on March 9, 2027. If no construction is taking place in accordance with the plans for which use was granted, all required permits and your license...
Speak up, Mr. Marston.
All required permits and your licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including but not limited to stormwater plan review approvals from the Department of Environmental Quality. A payment and waiver agreement shall be agreed upon and executed between the solar facility operator and the county. At the end of the payment and waiver agreement's term, the county and solar facility owner may mutually agree to an extension of the existing agreement or to another agreement. Compliance with the payment and waiver agreement is required, and failure to make the required payments under the payment and waiver agreement will be considered a violation of the approved conditional use permit. And failure to comply may result in the county requiring the removal of the solar facility. Vegetative screening shall be established around the perimeter of the fence where the property owner's existing vegetation does not already provide a 25-foot width. The planning shall have a minimum height of four feet, and at least 75% of the planning shall be evergreen with a continuous landscaping strip and a minimum of a 25-foot width forming a continuous screen. A landscape plan shall be submitted by a professional landscape architect, and a charity bond shall be posted for the plans for the life of the project to secure compliance with screening. The vegetative screening shall be planned within six months after the issuance of a building permit and shall be maintained for the life of the facility. The grass inside the solar facility shall be a fire-resistant variety ground cover and shall be maintained to not exceed 18 inches. The proposed 400 linear feet of guardrail shall be constructed, as shown in the application, along Old Glee Point Road. A charity bond for decommissioning shall be posted by all facility owners of record prior to obtaining any necessary permits for construction of the solar project in the amount of $150,000, $150,109.77. The charity bond shall be applicable to all successors, heirs, and assigns, and each property owner, heirs, and assigned shall be severally and jointly liable for the full amount of the charity bond. The charity bond shall be updated and filed with the county every five years based upon an estimate of a mutually-agree-upon professional engineer licensed in the Commonwealth of Virginia, with the cost to revise the plan being borne by the facility owner and with experience in preparing decommissioning estimates for localities in the Commonwealth. The new estimate shall include any increasing or decreasing costs due to current market rates and the estimated cost of decommissioning. Proof of adequate liability insurance shall be required, and a copy of the lease agreement shall be submitted to the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of any building or zoning permits. A revised copy of the lease agreement shall be provided to the zoning administrator if any substantial changes to the lease agreement are made during the life of the project. The perimeter fence shall consist of an eight-foot-tall chain-link security fence. This project shall be limited to the fence 19 acres. Any onsite lighting provided for the operational phase of the solar facility shall be dark-skY compliant, shielded away from adjacent properties, and positioned downward to minimize light spillage onto adjacent properties. During construction of the solar facility, any temporary construction lighting shall be positioned downward inward and shielded to eliminate glare from all adjacent properties. Emergency and/or safety lighting shall be exempt from this construction lighting condition. The CUP will be binding on the applicant or any successors or assigns of the project. Applicant or any successor or assigned shall notify the county upon any transfer or assignment of the project within 15 days of such transfer or assignment, providing the county with contact information for any transferee. The applicant shall notify the county when the facility is operational and shall submit an annual report to the county on the amount of energy produced on December 31 of each year. If the report indicates that no energy was generated during the year, then the decommissioning process will be triggered to begin. If the applicant, its successor, or the property owners fail to timely decommission the solar facilities, the county shall have the right, but not the obligation, to commence decommissioning activities and shall have access to the property, access to the full amount of the decommissioning bond, and the rights to the solar facilities, equipment, and materials on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Marston. All right, any board members have any questions or comments before opening the public hearing?
I do.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Tom.
Pivot Energy, I want to understand the corporate aspect, holding subsidiary. I see Pivot, I see SGC Power, 200 folly, and now Old Glee... I've seen Privet, I see SGC Power, 200 Filey, and now Old Gleeve Point Road. And the SGC Power, 200 Filey, and Old Gleeve Point all come back to the same address in Maryland. I want to know what kind of limited liability you're doing, that you need all these corporations to protect yourself, but then the county needs to be protected. Why do you need to do this?
So, SGC Power was the original... entered the original agreement with Mr. Jett as the leaseholder. Pivot Energy acquired SGC Power and its assets? And that's why...
But your application has 200 Filey LLC, not Privet.
Yes, each one of our facilities operates as a separate LLC.
And why do you do that, other than to protect yourself and not ourselves?
Yeah, that's an industry norm for the solar industry, and the reason that it's structured that way is because these projects are individually financed by different financing entities.
You mean you can't do separate financing for one project under the same corporate structure? Big corporations don't do that? Of course they do!
You can do that. The way that the solar projects are structured, there's often, you know, tax incentives that are associated with a project and the project financing, and so by separating it out into individual projects, that contributes to the way that it's financed. It's not intended to shield any of the companies from their responsibilities to the county. And I think, as Mr. Hickox mentioned earlier, Pivot is in the industry for the long run. They're a long-term holder.
Yeah, I know, they're in Denver, I saw that too. All right. Why do you use LLC as opposed to company? Limited liability is the definition of that. You're doing that for a very particular reason. Enough said. All right. You don't like the idea of a chain link fence, but want agricultural fence, but wooden post. Every solar farm I have gone by has chain link fence.
Which is ugly.
It may be... The thing is, wooden posts, even if they're salt-treated, rot over time. What is the objection, other than appearance, to chain link versus what you wish?
The recommendation of the ag fence is just to... More of an aesthetic. It still provides the same security protection, but if it would please the board, we're more than happy to go with the standard security-type fence. We have no objection to that. But the reason we choose ag fence in this application is for the aesthetic and to keep with the local character.
What about using agricultural fencing, but metal poles?
We're more than happy to look into that.
Why is that not considered?
This is standard detail for fencing that we use on our sites.
All right. I know we've got two applications going at the same time, and is on this... I know on the other one, on Filey, there's some berms. Do you have berms on this one?
For stormwater control?
Yes.
Yes, during construction.
During construction.
There are no permanent stormwater features. It's flat and will drain naturally.
Well, it's not always flat, it goes back to the head of Horn Harbor Creek.
I mean, with the stand... With the natural flow of the land, we're not doing grading to the point where it will alter the flow pattern, other than how it naturally occurs to this day.
What level of storm is your water quality plan based upon? What year? Is it 1, 5, 10, 15, 20, 100, whatever?
I believe it goes to the full gamut, but I'll refer to our civil line here.
10-year storm. Well, I can tell you, North Omen County has had more... Have 100, sometimes 500 in one year. So, but anyway. And how is that berm constructed? It's earth and dirt packed with a bulldozer or whatever?
Correct, it's an earth and berm.
Just like you would do on the cuts and fills on a highway?
Correct.
Gotcha. That's all the questions I have at this present time.
All right. Mr. Bryan, you have anything?
So, with your projects, are y'all going to own these projects from the time that they're built until they're decommissioned, or are they going to be sold?
That is correct. We will... Pivot Energy will own the entire land.
So, you don't build them and sell them?
We do not.
And educate me a little bit on fire retardant grass.
Currently specked out...
There's a lot of firefighters in here, so watch what you say.
Is a pollinator-type mix. I think just with maintenance, regular mowing, I know with the new orders, bi-annual mowing, that would be the best way to just keep it down.
Okay, so dead grass at 18 inches is going to burn, so it's not going to be fire retardant. That's all I got.
Mr. Long? Mr. Jett?
Not right now.
All right. Speaking of big grass, while we on that subject, I was just down to Gloucester yesterday at the solar facility there. That is a well-maintained facility. The grass is eight inches or less, and that is a good-looking facility. Chain link fence, 18 inches of tall grass is not going to cut it.
I understand. Now, with Vegas in violation of our conditions, so we're more than happy to manicure and meet those conditions.
All right. Your guardrail going down Gleeve Point Road, how far off the highway is that going to be?
It varies. I apologize, I have anything, I believe, from...
I can't hear you.
Apologies. It varies anywhere from 10 to 20 feet. It's just basically keeping a little metric.
All right. How close is your first panel going to be to the highway? To the ditch line?
That I can't answer. I apologize, I don't have time.
Well, you need to get that answer to me.
Absolutely.
Our panels are roughly, just with our landscaping plan as specked out, there's at least 15 to 20 feet from the tree lines to the fence and then the panels, so they're not shaded or occluded by the fence or the trees, are probably, depending on the orientation, obviously, they're diagonal to a degree as the fence line moves, probably varying anywhere from 10 feet or so.
All right. I don't have anything else at this time.
So, you're talking about the road, the road front itself?
What was that?
The road itself you're talking about.
Yeah.
I thought we had a 200-foot setback on that.
Yeah. I'm talking about the road right now. I haven't mentioned anything anywhere else. Just the road.
Approximately how many acres of timberland will have to be cut, based upon this plan?
For this site, very minimal tree removal. This site is currently an ag field.
Yeah, I know that.
That's being rented. So, minimal tree removal, correct?
What do you consider minimal?
I have 5.77 acres of timbering for the Old Gleeve project to be minimized by placing the panels as much as possible in open spaces.
That's a third.
All right. Any other comments, any other questions or comments from the board before we open the public hearing? Gentlemen, thank y'all, we'll be back to you in a little bit. All right. I'm going to open the public hearing now on this public hearing. The first person on the sign-up sheet is George Benjamin.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is George Benjamin, 389 Sawmill Cove Drive, Eastville. And I was involved in the solar panel industry since the first commercial one was done in San Martin, Abyslo, California. I did the connectivity, the cabling and connectivity, and then later on, because I was a young engineer at the time, I got to do the one in Carlsbad and cable that one. So, I do have some experience with it, so bear with me. First question I would ask, do these panels contain gallium arsenide? Can you answer that?
I'll direct your questions to us.
Do the panels contain gallium arsenide?
You can answer.
Are panels that we expect out or a poly-silicon with a boron phosphorus matrix?
No gallium arsenide.
No, they will all pass the T-clip test, and we use contract...
Very good.
Well, before you get started, T-clip, do those are not as familiar with solar farms as we all are not? What does that mean?
That is Toxicity Characteristics Leach Program. It is an EPA-made program for any hazardous waste, not exclusive to solar, that determines the leachability of hazardous chemicals, any type of heavy metals. Respect for recycling or disposal of materials.
I hope I don't lose any of my time.
No, no, no. That's on me.
I will give you a few more minutes.
Good. One of the things that you've got to worry about with solar farms is the materials that can leach in through water. You have a hailstorm and hits that protective coating on it, the water can leak in. Kids throw rocks in there. Kids will shoot 22s in them, you know, little things like that happen, and the water gets in. If there's heavy metals in there, it can leach into the ground. So, that's one issue that I want to be sure that the county covers for protection of everybody else. The second thing is, when you look at solar farms and how the structure is, when you get to seeing the number of different LLCs and corporations, and Mr. Tomlin hit on the point earlier here very well, but one of my experiences is, is a lot of these farms, as they approach the end of their life cycle, one LLC will have financial difficulties, and it may go bankrupt, and then the rest of you county people are liable, and you're going to have to clean up the mess. So, what I would suggest that you consider is that you have a bond that's fully funded upfront and indexed on an annual basis for inflation, that is callable to the appropriate county financial person, that I have no idea who that is. I'm sure that you want to be fully protected, and the only way you're going to do that is have a bond that's fully funded upfront, and that it's able to be accessed by the appropriate county financial person. And I'll leave it up to Mr. Marston and these people to grant the language for you, which I'm sure will be appropriate. But Mr. Tomlin was hitting on a very important point. If you look at the structure in a lot of these smaller solar operations, there's LLC, LLC, LLP, LLC, LLP. This one goes into financial trouble as it gets near the end of the life cycle, and you're like, oh, you don't get the bond up front. So, those are my comments. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. All right. Our next person is Josh Cosella.
Joan Cosella.
All right. I'm sorry, I just cannot read all that. I apologize.
You may want to spell your name for him.
I think I'll get extra time for that.
Yes.
Okay. I haven't done this before. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm just going to read off my sheet. We live in an area of two major impacts when it comes to solar farms: agriculture and the preservation of the Chesapeake Bay. And I'm going to talk about agriculture first. Agriculture is the heritage of the northern neck. In Northumberland County, the 2017 Agricultural Census has shown a 37% increase in farms since 2012. Total market value of products sold is over $20 million, and the USDA has defined these two parcels as prime farmland. Scott Simpson, a county administrator for Halifax County, where 5,000 acres of solar farms are being considered right now, said, "That's land that will be out of production for agriculture or timber for at least a generation." Tax benefits over a cycle of 35 to 45 years did not offset the impacts of solar. "We're giving up our natural resources, our land, and we're not being compensated properly for it." And that is in the Virginia Mercury, 2020, when he made a comment on this. In addition to concerns about the current impact, a question to consider would be, will these companies located in Maryland and Denver be around in 30 years to deal with decommissioning these projects? Or will they be left to the future generations of Northumberland County to clean up? Now, I'll go on to the Chesapeake Bay. Concern about solar panels contributing to the degradation of water quality in the Chesapeake Bay watershed has come to light. The Belcher Solar Project in Louisa County was fined by DEQ when stormwater runoff flowed into the Harris Creek and surrounding farms. In response, there has been a bill in legislation which was passed, the HB, House Bill 106, was passed 91 to 7 in the legislature. It requires solar companies to submit a mitigation plan and be subject to a 45-day public comment period. Something to consider, solar companies are in a rush to get their projects pushed through Virginia Legislature by December 2024, so they don't have to be subject to this new regulation. Personally, I have many reservations about the proliferation of solar farms at the expense of forested and prime land. We, as a community, need to be prudent and vigilant as we consider these types of projects to ensure they meet current and anticipated standards. In conclusion, we need to take measures that guarantee they do not detract from the rural nature of our county, are environmentally sound, and include plans for reclamation of the land moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Next person to speak is Joan Palaza.
I think that's me.
That's who just spoke. Yeah, that's who spoke, but I...
Do you want me to do that again? I can do that again.
But I got you... I got you down twice.
At least she got you.
Huh?
One for Gleeve Point, one for Filey.
Yeah, got you down twice here. All right. No one else on the sign-up sheet? Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, sir. Sorry, first time speaking. Totally walked by the sign-up sheet.
That's all right.
Hello, beautiful supervisors. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Katie Powers. My husband and I own property at 652 Blackwells Wharf, directly downhill from this proposed site. My husband and I, along with 25 plus-or-minus families, live directly downhill from one of the proposed sites. This is clearly a neighborhood. There are apartments on one side, a brand-new home on the other, and two thriving businesses and homes directly across the road. Additionally, this impacts all of us downhill from the proposed site on Blackwells Wharf Road, Twin Girls Lane, Horn Harbor Road, and Overlook Road. Please reread your 2016 Northumberland County Comprehensive Plan, which is posted online, where all of these concerns I'm calling out are also concerns documented by the county. Goals and strategies are written out for how to ensure our county remains rural and clean, so please refer back to your own document. So, does the solar company have environmental insurance? If not, why? Who's going to pay for their bond? Our tax dollars should not pay for their bond, the company should pay for their bond. How will the solar company replace the homes of the wildlife that are going to be displaced? Five acres of woodland? The deer, the rabbits, the fauna, the everything that's going to be destroyed and leveled? They don't make more land. This is all we have. Please protect it.
It's my land. Thank you.
Okay. Great.
I live next to you. I don't want you to do this.
I built your house.
Okay. Well, then pay for it.
Okay.
All right. So, what is this going to do for our community? Jobs, income for stores, for how long? Is it going to be a three-year spurt in money coming in, and then what? Then we're left with this. What if there's a brush fire? And there will be. Is the solar company subsidizing the additional headcount and equipment that will be required of our small volunteer fire department? So, think about the huge fire in Emporia, Virginia, caused by a solar farm. Think about Texas. Who's going to protect us from the runoff when a panel breaks or a battery... Who's going to protect us from the runoff when a panel breaks or a battery explodes or deteriorates? It might be on a flat hill, but we're downhill. Water runs downhill. There's underground aquafor, right? So the solar company, are they providing external water sources? Are they going to build a reservoir? What's the plan? Right? So are they going to also tap into our aquafor that provides private water in our wells to the 25-plus families that live immediately around this property? So if there's a fire and the fire department is called, taxpayers are paying for the fire department, then they're going to have to take a huge influx of our water out of the aquafor, which is going to cause an increase, immediate increase of sodium levels. You take that water out of the ground to fight a fire, sodium comes in. Who's going to monitor our health? Who's going to watch the sodium levels? Then, the water comes back in and contaminants are coming off the ground. Our firefighters have put out the fire. They're spreading contaminants across the ground that leach into the soil, come into the aquafor, come into our private wells, that go into the great Wycomoco River and Horn Harbor, that's right there, which is a safe harbor. Everything is connected. Every single thing is connected. Who is going to manage and maintain the gravel roads and the newly paved state roads that VDOT was just here telling us about and was how much it's going to cost us? Who's going to pay for this? Sorry, I'm very emotional. Please forgive me. So what is the written plan to remove the solar farm at the end of the lease? As we were talking about, when the LLC is gone and defunct and our county is left with this monstrosity, who's going to pay for it? We are, to have to get rid of it, because they're not going to be around to do it. So how does this comply with the Chesapeake Bay Act? Northumberland County was the first one to sign up to participate in the Chesapeake Bay Act. How is this being good stewards of the land? Will the county assure us we can sell our homes at fair, regular market value when buyers don't want to live near a solar farm? And our county is a wasteland with no agriculture and disappearing or very sick wildlife?
Ma'am?
Yes.
Your time is up, so wrap it up, please.
Okay. So, is the county prepared to lose tax dollars when we can no longer attract ready, willing, and able buyers? Because they will not want to live next to a solar farm. I don't want to live next to a solar farm. All right? So are we prepared, as a county, to open the floodgates? Once we allow one solar farm, we'll see an immediate impact in our county. Every landowner with one acre will contact the solar company and offer their parcel for lease for a fast money grab. There's no shutting the floodgate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, supervisors. It's good to be with you all again. Misty, last week supervisor Jet. Sorry you couldn't be with us, but on behalf of Energy -- I'm sorry, so if you can hear me. On behalf of Energy Right, we hope our discussion last week and follow-up notes were informative and helpful, as you all consider amending parts of Northumberland Solar Ordinance.
All right. Would you state your name for the record?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't put that in my notes. I thought we already -- Jacob Caracella. Jacob Caracella. I was the second name on there with really bad eligible handwriting, so I apologize.
That's all right.
So, but I didn't want to -- I didn't want to sit in front of you. No, you're fine. But you're fine. As a reminder, we just encourage you all to consider the rights of landowners, regardless of the zoning district, just to have the ability to propose solar projects before you as the board. This evening, the board has an opportunity to approve, for one of the first times in this county's history, an energy-generating facility. And all of the above energy strategy will balance our energy grid, produce more American-made energy, and, in this case, being a community solar project, offer energy consumers who subscribe an opportunity to potentially see cheaper electric bills. I had a chance to learn more about the projects, this particular project, these projects, I should say, attending a community meeting at Ma. Margaret's House Bed and Breakfast, a beautiful property off of Greenville Road, down towards Reedville. While there, I spoke with the owner, a very friendly and sweet small business owner, born and raised here in Northumberland. And after learning about the project, she told me, and learning about the opportunity to see her energy bill lowered, she may now consider subscribing if the project is approved. Consider thinking about a long-term strategy and the county's ability to produce energy right here in the county, Northumberland County. Generating energy at home reduces the dependence on other energy sources for grid stability and the potential for generating additional revenue for the county, a benefit to all residents. We also want to reiterate the importance of property rights of private landowners. Property rights are an institutional principle of this country, Commonwealth, and county. Most of these fields are not producing their potential greater, their potential value to the landowner or Northumberland County beyond annual property taxes. Unlike other developments, this small-scale solar project will not bring any odor, noise, traffic, or burden residents with additional costs. This opportunity should not be seen as a detriment, but as a strategic benefit to generate energy and revenue without additional complications. Additionally, solar fields bring the added benefit of preserving land for future use while generating 10 to 20 times more revenue for the county than if the land sits mostly on use. Adjacent property owners don't have to worry about noise, traffic, or even more egregious environmental impacts from housing development or other forms that will actually be permanent. Dozens of counties in Virginia have safely permitted solar projects, and like any technologies and developments, continues to innovate and improve. We appreciate the time and effort you all have dedicated to discussing solar and energy development in Northumberland, and understand your decision can be very difficult. Traditionally, our basic necessities have been food, water, shelter, clothing, sleep, and sleep. We don't often associate energy being a necessity, but our society is becoming more and more dependent on the commodity to survive, and not always by choice. When energy discussions occur, we strongly urge you to consider property rights, American-made energy, Northumberland Energy Independence, revenue incentives for the county, affordable electricity for low-income residents, and an innovative way to preserve property in Northumberland. Thank you for listening and an opportunity to speak with you all. And of course, as always, we'll be here as a resource when you want to call us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak?
Can I speak again?
No, you only speak one time. Sir?
I have not signed up. Is it possible I could speak?
Yes, sir. You can come on up to the mic and speak.
I'm standing for a difference, and I'd like to ask some questions.
Is it pertaining to this public hearing?
To this question, I'm curious about something about this project. I would like to know, what is the relationship between this energy company and Dominion Power? And what is the relationship? Is there funding between Dominion Power and this company, number one? And number two, how much of this power generated stays in this county? I've heard a statement him say to help Northumberland County stay energy-independent. I'm trying to figure out how that works into this. Can somebody answer that for me?
All right. Would you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I do apologize. My name is Kirk Brammer. I'm at 83 Hickory Lane in Reedville.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir. So those were just two questions, just sitting back in the corner. I'm sitting here scratching my head and I'm saying, where does this come across? How does this, how much of this energy stays in our county? How does it help Northumberland County?
I have no idea. Perhaps they could answer your question.
First, Dominion and Pivot Energy have no financial relationship. Dominion is a utility running through, so that's why it means we connect to Dominion's lines, and that's where we bring our power to market. With our shared solar program, it's...
Where does it go? Where's that energy going to? It's going outside of our county, right?
It goes to the grid, but as a subscriber to our shared solar program, as a resident...
Hold on.
As a subscriber, as a resident of the county, then that power is, goes to you. If everyone in this room signs up, that power goes to you.
I'm on Dominion. I'm on Dominion, so how do I get access?
Yes, they subsidize your bills, and the lowest minimum bill through that is $55 a month. This current system is set up for 100% low income, and there are other cost incentives that go along with it, but Pivot has no financial stake. Dominion does not benefit from us doing this. We entered the Virginia Shared Solar Program, which is a government-run program run by Paul, that runs along US Utilities and Utility Commission.
Okay.
Dominion does.
Wouldn't Dominion lose?
Okay. I thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right. Would anyone else like to speak? All right. Would anyone else like to speak? All right. Would anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight?
Yes. Jim Johnson.
Sir?
Yes.
Would you state your name, please?
Jim Johnson, Oliver Ford, 32 South Burn.
Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson.
My only comment would be, it seems somewhat inconsistent for the board to look at this ordinance and the next one on solar energy, when in the very first action you took tonight was to send back the revisions to the solar energy regulation back to the planning permission. It seems that you don't have the planning permission, draft something that everybody agrees to, and then you would approve projects, not to risk the fact that someone saying they got approved before the planning permission made some other possible change to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right. Would anyone else in the virtual world like to speak? All right. Anyone else in the virtual world like to speak? Anybody else? All right. No one else wants to speak? I'm going to close the public hearing and the matter's before the board now.
I have a question for the applicant based upon question. Dominion Energy receives nothing from this. Is that correct?
Correct.
What do Dominion taxpayers get from this?
By subscribing, they get a discount.
No, no. Suppose I don't subscribe to this. What does I, myself, as a Dominion Energy ratepayer, benefit from this?
Your rate will likely be the same as it is now, because if you're not, Dominion's doing all your power generation.
Yes, I know that.
So they would be supplementing that generally.
There's money being passed around somehow, and somebody's paying for it.
But it's not going between Pivot Energy and Dominion.
I'm not worried about yourselves. How does myself, as a Dominion Energy ratepayer, benefit from this, other than possibly having higher rates to pay for this?
With our system, just because the...
I'm not worried about your system.
Well, I'm not talking about money going in our pocket. Our generation rate is cheaper than Dominion's rate.
I understand that. I saw the calculations we had last time or whatever. But I know the electrons, once they get in the system, they go wherever. And I also don't understand enough about this scenario, basically, you see a lot of credits and like that. Well, I look at my electric bill and I see a rider fee, a rider fee, a rider fee, a rider fee. One of them is for solar. And those riders mean higher rates. We've got one for that wonderful wind farm out in the Atlantic Ocean, too. And you talk about liability, that's a $9 billion liability. So Dominion receives nothing, other than to be able to operate at their increased requested request of equity. So, anyway, enough of that. What is the criteria to take advantage of your cost savings? Two benefits from it?
Just subscribing to our program.
I guess low income? Is it for low-income folks? Or can anyone in this room subscribe?
Yes. We have an online portal, and we provide information to the board to disseminate to the county.
And what benefit does that bring to us as working people in this county?
Lower electric rates.
Really?
Yes.
Dominion has raised their rates, and I don't foresee this really helping us.
Ma'am, the public hearing is closed right now.
I've got another question. You said the minimum rate is $55, which was set by the State Corporation Commission.
Correct.
Let's suppose somebody who has a low energy usage and actually may pay less without being in the program, are they still going to have to pay $55?
No. No, because at that point, it wouldn't benefit them.
How are they going to find out until it's too late?
Well, they wouldn't register for our program if their bill was $30 a month. That would...
All right. As if, as we had that one lady who mentioned about human trafficking, things get online, people sometimes don't understand the complexity of this whole process of energy, generation, regulation, et cetera.
And I understand. And like I said, I'm more than happy to provide the board to send to all the residents more information about how signing up works and those benefits, and how, it'd be clear transparency of how our portal works and how the benefits can be realized.
No further questions?
All right. If you sign up, how long is that effective?
You mean like a contract term?
Yeah. If I was to sign up tonight, how long would that be enforced?
My understanding, it is not a contract term. It is till you want to leave the program. But I can get clarification.
So I could sign up for two months and leave, or one month and leave, or six months and leave?
I'd have to get clarification on that.
And no cost.
Yeah. And at no cost of leaving.
Again, I'd have to get clarification on it.
All right. You're fencing back on Gleed Point Road. How far from the road are your first panels?
What was that word to say? Current ordinance says the panels...
Speak up, sir.
The panels shall be 200 feet from the road unless preventative measures have been put in place to prevent traffic from entering the solar facility.
Okay.
And that requires then the board to reduce from the 200, right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
All right. How about sidelines?
25 feet.
25 feet. Okay. All right. Now, all of your sidelines are going to be 25 feet?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have right this minute. Anyone else have any questions?
Is there a slide for Folly?
Ma'am, the public hearing is closed right now. All right. Any board members have any more questions? All right. If not, what's the pleasure of the board? Anyone want to make a motion to approve or disapprove this?
This is for the county attorney, assuming, just for purposes of discussion, not saying it's going to happen. Assume that the county approves this permit, this application, still got the agreement, when would that be considered as part of the process? We haven't quote-unquote negotiated. We've been presented to us.
Right. This is not a citing agreement.
Right.
This is a small energy project, so what the applicant has offered is a payment and waiver agreement, which is, for all intents and purposes, similar to a citing agreement. And the payment and waiver agreement, it's my understanding, is incorporated as one of the conditions to the CUP. So by approving the CUP, you would be required, and imposing the conditions, you would be requiring the applicant to enter into the payment and waiver agreement, that I believe is part of the application packet. And if they fail to do that, then they would be in violation of the CUP.
And there's one operative word in that proposed thing, waiver. What is that wave?
I'd ask the applicant to explain that. I'm not sure why it's called a payment and waiver agreement.
And when I see waiver and I see limited liability, I have a little concern.
Yeah. In the payment and waiver, I mentioned earlier that there is a section of the code that requires the board to make a finding that the project is in substantial compliance with a comprehensive plan, or there's an option to waive that under subsection H of section 15.2-2232. So, as I mentioned earlier, we would request that the board either enter a motion granting that waiver or making that finding. granting that waiver or making that finding along with the issuance of, or approval of the conditional use permit, or that can be pursued as part of the, um, as part of the waiver request. The, the settlement agreement and settlement and waiver agreement includes an acknowledgement of that waiver.
What is the basis for making the finding that this is in compliance with our comprehensive plan?
Generally, the...
Other than our own, our own false face statement?
The, uh, these kinds of findings, uh, substantial accord finding is typically standard for approving a zoning, um, decision that's not, not mentioned in the comp plan typically. I, you know, I don't know if the applicant wants to go further beyond that, but if, if you don't have a, a use that is recognized in the comp plan and you wanna approve that, you have to, you would have to, uh, make a finding that it's in substantial accord with the comp plan, which you can do under, uh, 15.2-2232. And they mention that on page two in the, um, payment waiver agreement as, um, Mr. Wallace, I think, uh, mentioned. But that, but if, depending on the board's determination on the application, if you're inclined to approve it, I would recommend that a motion be offered to make the finding of substantial, um, that the, that the project is in substantial accord with the comp plan agreement, uh, first, and then, and then, uh, make your decision on approval if, if you're so inclined.
Question for the engineers and maybe the attorney. The new law that's coming into effect in what, 2024 regarding mitigation plans, how would this impact your proposal here?
Uh, on the mitigation plan, it would require additional impervious area be attributed to the solar panels.
Well, right now, doesn't DEQ consider solar panels impervious?
As of right now, the, the current guidance doesn't cover them as impervious, but the concrete pads or the foundations for them themselves, they are, there's currently a disconnect between...
So the current regulations say a concrete pad is not impervious surface.
No, concrete pad is the solar panel.
So you can, water goes into the solar panels?
I'm sorry?
So water goes into your solar panels?
No, but they have...
But they're impervious surface, it can't be one or the other. Either you're pregnant or you're not.
Maybe.
Uh, well, maybe this day, I don't know anymore, but... So if this, if this were considered, your solar panels in addition to all the other true impervious surface, you'd have to have do more mitigation and control for this. And what areas in particular would that cover on that pla, plan, right? I know you had 238 some page of applications, pull that out.
Uh, it'd be if we have to do an additional engineering design to determine where it would need to go.
And what kind of potential plants, sediment ponds or...
Stone hard basin or some of those ones.
And obviously, given the watershed area of this, you don't know yet without doing the calculations. Okay, that's, oh, I've got...
You finished, Tom?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Um, as far as conditions, you have the list, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, Philip, do you see anything else that you thought of since we had this discussion that we should add?
I mean, all I can say is it has taken staff a while to develop conditions that we have developed and, and we feel that this is the best that we can do at this time.
Okay.
My, my only, my only comment on the...
You don't want to...
Mr. Chairman, my, my only comment in response to Mr. Long's question would be, you know, just, just recognizing the applicant's, uh, request on, uh, item number 10 about changing the, uh, eight-foot-tall chain link security fence to an agricultural fence, but that's, that's up to the board whether they wanna make that change.
Yeah, I agree. You say you wouldn't mind doing that anyway.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments?
I don't know if I've overlooked it, and I may have, and I apologize if I have overlooked it, but I, it's hard to make a decision on these projects and you don't get the conditions. Now, if I've overlooked them, I apologize. If they were sent to us previous, but I haven't seen them, I've been looking through them.
Okay, yeah.
But I haven't seen it, and I, like I said, I may be overlooking it, but, you know, it's, it's a lot of conditions to take in consideration and what you may wanna tweak and not tweak and, um, so, I mean, we can bring it up, vote on it if you want. It's a pleasure to board.
It's, it's, it's in the record, right?
All right, any other comments? They've been uploaded.
Yeah, they're, they're in the rec, they're in the administrative record, Rice, Brandon.
Yeah, they're in the records. When were they uploaded?
Were they, when were they posted? Was it this afternoon?
That's too late. That's too late. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we deny this application.
Second. All right, I got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not...
Mr. Tomlin, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, Mr. Gregory.
May I ask, is the re, the reason for the denial would be for, uh, based upon sound, uh, zoning principles and the, 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 um...
I deem where it complies with sound zoning laws. If I can waive the comprehensive plan, I can say that too. But I do it mainly because, as I said, the last one, yes, some gentleman mentioned about a bond. We could get a cash bond right now, but I could tell you, if anybody has anything in the stock market, has any, would anybody anticipate the interest rates doing what they did? Would we be guaranteed to have sufficient funds 30 years from now? I do, limited liability corporations are put in place for obvious reasons, but I cannot limit the liability to this county when I have insufficient crystal ball to know what's gonna happen.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Greg?
Yes, sir.
But I also deem, I deem it not being in compliance with a comprehensive plan either, if you want to.
All right, any other comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, the motion does not, I mean, the motion passes.
Who's the second? Who's the second?
All right. All right, our next one would be the solar project on Folly Road. Mr. Morriston?
Yes, sir.
Could you take care of that, please?
Sure. We have a request by Steven W. Jet owner and 200 Folly LLC applicant for a conditional use permit to allow a utility-scale solar energy facility on property zoned A1 agriculture. Property is shown as taxman parcel 27-1-304 and 304A and is located on Northumberland Highway in Burgess.
All right, any board members have any comments right this minute?
No, I think we beat this horse pretty good.
All right.
I have nothing new to ask other than reincorporate what I said before in terms of questions and stuff like that.
Gentlemen, would you mind telling us what your plans are there?
Yes, so with, with respect to the Folly Road project, um, one distinction between this project and the Gleep Road project that we just discussed, um, is, deals with a vegetative screening condition, which is condition four in the proposed conditions that we reviewed. I just wanna highlight this quickly as, as a difference. The, um, condition four requires a 25-foot buffer zone. There is a portion of this project along the eastern side that abuts a utility right-of-way, and so, um, we would request with respect to condition four to move from a 25-foot to a 15-foot vegetative buffering zone. We can certainly work as part of the landscape plan to be, to be proposed, uh, under condition five to increase density and take steps to make sure that, um, you know, we're still having an effective buffering with that 15-foot instead of 25-foot. So that's, that's one change that we'd request with respect to that condition. Condition nine also is the fencing. There again, we've, you know, we have requested the agricultural fence, we were, we can certainly do the chain link, um, but wanted to flag that that is where that fencing matter comes into play. This project again is a three-megawatt project, so it's the same size project as, as the prior project. This is gonna serve about 900 residential customers, um, providing bill credits through the community solar program. And I'm gonna turn it over now to Mr. Hickok to give a little bit more, um, detail about this particular project.
Could you briefly go back to the tip, the tipper road one, I mean Gleep Point Road one? What was the least area, fenced area on that one? I thought that was like 18 acres. Versus this one?
Gleep was 18.61.
And this is?
This is 14...
How does this generate more energy in less acreage?
It's the layout of the panels and the efficiency that the panels provide during that, in that current layout. That some panels, some systems, depending on how close the roads are together, have some shading effect on each other. Obviously, more space allows you to reduce that.
Okay, I was just curious, the distinction, I mean, you got four acres difference, but same amount of generation. Do you then have a map showing the right-of-way easement, uh, utility easement right-of-way that was concerned?
Uh, not zoomed in, but on the next slide, it does show it. On the eastern side.
Come over here for me to see what you've got.
That utility, that way there?
Right, right, yes. There is a line coming in right here. So this is where we're...
And that is a northern next substation as opposed to Dominion.
I believe this is...
Yes.
Dominion?
No, that's Northern.
This is Northern, yeah.
And you, and this proposal would not feed anything into that?
No, it connects, its connection is down here. And that also connects to the Dominion system, but again, it's not benefited there.
All right. Any other board members have any questions or comments for these gentlemen? All right, I'll open the public hearing here, sirs. All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing. The first person I have on the list to speak up is George Benjamin.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Pleasure to see you again. I'll just reiterate something that struck me while the other, uh, presentation was going on. Uh, I was particularly concerned about the panels having calcium arsenide in them because they make a very efficient panel. But with the heavy metals in there, you still have the same kind of population problem with, uh, heavy metals going into the soil, hail breaks the layer, protecting layer on top, or as I said earlier, somebody throws rocks in there, like me when I was a kid, I would've shot them with a 22 to see what the hell happened, you know? But the main issue, again, is the bond. You need that money now upfront. And the reason you need it is so it can be indexed on an annual basis for inflation. So that if at the end of the, toward the end of the life cycle and they're having problems financially in either an LLP or an LLC in the stack of corporations, they can go chapter seven, liquidation. And who stuck with it? The county stuck with it. So I would ask you to be darn sure that you cover and protect the county with the bond upfront and then accessed by the appropriate financial person of the county. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person to speak is Joan, Joan Lassiter?
Oh.
You wanna speak yet?
No, I think I'm good.
All right, okay. All right, I have no one else on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Come on back, Ms. Powers.
Thank you. Well, look, you know my name, we're friends. So again, I refer to the 2016 Northumberland Comprehensive Plan regarding protecting our rural area, our communities for farming and for families. So regarding Folly Road, my same concern, when there's a fire and there will be, where's the water coming from? Is there a reservoir? Are you gonna take the water from the neighboring wells and their aqua for? What's the maintenance schedule to keep the barrier clean of weeds, debris, and who's gonna be removing the dead animals that are gonna be trapped behind the chain link fences and die of dehydration and starvation? Who's gonna be doing that on a daily basis? Cause it's gonna be daily. Two property owners in Northumberland County who I've spoken with directly, both of those property owners own over 500 acres each of farmland. They have told me that if Northumberland County opens the doors for solar farms, they are gonna break their contracts with their farmers and they are gonna call the solar company. So that's a thousand acres immediately that will be gone from our farmers. So the farmers are gonna leave. What does the independent study show will be the long-term effect to our community wildlife, soil and water? Where's the environmental impact study? And what, how does this uphold our agreement to the Chesapeake Bay Act? Again, please do not pass this and keep us rural and beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who else would like to speak tonight?
I just have one other thing to say, I'm sorry.
All right, come on, you, you haven't spoke on this one.
All right. This is just one point. Virginia is on a fast track to get as many solar farms as they can, uh, in place. That's what our legislature is doing right now. If they continue, right now, there are 70 projects in Virginia right now for solar farms. That encompasses 100,000 acres of Virginia land, which is 1% of the state of Virginia. So maybe instead of being part of that crowd, we could be the exception to that crowd. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I've been listening to the concerns of, uh, the citizens of the county. But I think we need to think about this thing, uh, on both sides of the fence, and we need to look long-term. Currently, this country is importing coal from China and other nations. We're hauling it into our ports, we're burning it, and we're destroying the ozone. And then after we burn this stuff, we have fly ash, which is toxic, and we have nowhere to put it. to put it. We're burning it in grounds, and it's running in our rivers. So while everything can't be, you know, solar doesn't fit every opportunity, we have to meet a happy medium, because it's our children that's going to suffer. We see these storms and all of this stuff by, you know, and now they're coming out with ways encouraging you for carbon planting trees and doing that stuff. But we're continually producing, burning coal is not the answer. We have to have something that's environmentally friendly. So, you know, we just have to look at it, there's two sides to every story. But we have to think long-term. We can't keep buying coal from China, burning it, messing up the ozone, and then having toxic ash debris in our land that goes into our water. Thank you.
All right, would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Stephen W. Jett. I'm the landowner. This land's been in my family for probably 200 years. My great-great-grandfather was born in the house that I live in on that property in 1855. He's been in the family much longer than that. I put the farmer off because I was tired of seeing my land poisoned by agribusiness that was killing my land. He killed my berries along the edge. On the other property, he killed my fruit trees. And I kicked them off because I was tired of my land being poisoned by agribusiness. Because, see, we're not talking about farmers here. They're not growing vegetables that we eat. They're growing garbage that they're sending to China. Talking about China again. Yes, they're sending it to China. We need to get off of our business, my business. It's my land. I have a right to do with it what I feel is right for me. My ancestors would roll over in their grave if they saw you people, what you're doing to me here right now, and you people that are here, that ain't been here long. My family's been here since the 1600s.
So protect it.
I am. I'm protecting my.
All right, all comments to the board.
And I'm protecting my land from the poison that the farmers are putting on my land. I put them off. I now have to bush hog all that land, because I was tired of seeing, and everybody I talked to that's ever been in that cloud that comes from those sprayers, they get rashes, I mean, it burns their throats, eyes, it's horrible. We should not be doing that. We should be using manure. We should be doing it the old way. But see, that's too hard. People are afraid to work. I'm not afraid to work. I've worked hard my whole life. Just like I said, if this lady here, if I'm not mistaken, I built the house she's living in. I've worked hard all my life. I don't have much to show for it. Divorce kind of does that. This was my retirement that I've been cheated. I don't want to hear what you've got to say. Thank you.
All right, come on now, calm down.
I'm calm. They're the ones that's not calm.
No comments from the.
From the peanut gallery, yes. Anyway, I deserve to have my rights given to me, not taken from me, excuse me. They are God-given rights. God put, gave me dominion over the earth, and he told us that we could use the earth however we choose. I will, I will be answering to my God at the end of this show. You will too, each and every one of you. The way you treat me is how you're treating Jesus Hisself. He said that we, the way you treat your brother is the way that you're treating him. You crucified Jesus. You crucified Jesus. Now, you're going to crucify me too. Because, see, I can't afford to live in this world the way it is. My finances are down to zilch. This was a God send to me, and if you take it from me, God will have something to say about it. Because God loves me just the way I am, sinner to the core. But I have repented, and I praise my God, because he has given me a new life, where I am able to be free, even with tyrants. You cannot stop my world. You can do what you want, but think about it, because you will pay for it. I assure you, God is watching. And not that I'm special, don't get me wrong. The way you treat your brother, whoever it is, is the way God's going to treat you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Hello, Sean Scully. I'm at Ways Creek in Reedville. Thank you for letting me speak. I think that some very good points have been brought up with regards to the bond and making sure that if these solar farms go in, that the money is there to reclaimate the land after it's done. But I also think we need to look at the fact that the solar farm brings us cleaner energy, and it also allows the farm fields where we currently have a lot of chemicals, like Mr. Jett said over here, the roundups that are going into the bay, and they're killing the environment, and they're killing some of our aquatic life, which hurts our fishermen and our oystermen, and all of the sulfur and nitrogen that runs off into the bay that hurts the fish and the wildlife. I think that's very important to look at as well. Putting this land to a solar farm will help mitigate some of that runoff that goes into the bay. And as long as the concerns are addressed about the bond and taking away, making sure that the land can be remediated, as well as any environmental issues that might come from breaking of the solar panels or whatever, I think that we really should look at allowing solar panels on certain parcels of land where it makes sense and where it can help our bay, especially if the solar company will do extra remediation with regards to the runoff from their property that goes into the bay. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to speak?
I didn't sign up on this one, folks, I'm sorry. But my name is Jacob Caricella. I just had a couple points to bring up from what I've heard. First thing, I just want to remind everyone, this is private property. I just wanted to clarify. Second point, I just wanted to say, just for transparency of what is occurring at the General Assembly, and as you folks know, what we discussed this last week, the opportunity for solar fields to come into local jurisdictions is currently in the jurisdictional power of the local leaders, the Board of Supervisors, the city council members. It is not the General Assembly forcing or requiring, or even that point to the federal government, forcing or requiring these solar panels to come into Virginia. However, as we discussed last week, I do want to make a point, there was a couple budget amendments, if you want to know what the General Assembly's doing this year, a couple budget amendments that were put in that would create a statewide study task force to tell you, or sorry, I don't want to say that to you, but to tell localities where and where they can't put solar potentially. So at the moment, it's up to these guys, and I know it's hard, I know it's a tough decision. But it certainly should be looked at, just like any other development. It shouldn't be passed just because it's new and it's solar. It should be, it should be looked upon and studied and judged just on the same merits as any other development you all have approved or denied in some cases before, so. But I just wanted to clarify, you know, who has the power, you know, where it rests, and really what is happening at the General Assembly. Now, just to update you, that budget amendment was taken out, but he used to say that's not going to be put back in. But just want to remind everyone, just come at this as thinking of both perspectives and really understanding the benefits, as well as, you know, some potential risks that could be improved upon. There's always ways to approve upon, so. And, you know, for this particular project, I do feel that they are, in fact, you know, compromising at some points in some cases on a few matters, and, you know, there's always a solution, right? I think we can all agree, for most things, we can always find solutions. So, thank you very much for listening to me, and thank you all for listening as well.
All right, thank you. All right, would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else wants to speak? All right, I've got one in the back.
Hello, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Janelle Weest, and I live at 50 Tidewater Court in Heathsville. I am a new person to this area. We've only lived here four years. And what brought us here is the beauty of Virginia, the beauty of the land, the water, you know, the fact that this is considered by Senator Warren a historic site, okay? Yet, now that we drive from one part of Virginia to another, all we see is beautiful land being destroyed, okay? Trees being chopped down, okay? Animals being dislodged from their homes, okay? People concerned about what they need now to look at as homeowners, okay? And their properties may be being devalued by these kind of sites in what was gorgeous, beautiful, natural lands. And that concerns me, as a homeowner, as a, you know, as someone who loves the animals and everything else in this area, to start seeing these things coming up and start seeing our beautiful homeland destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak? All right, anyone in the virtual world like to speak on this project? Got anybody? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak on this Folly project?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Okay, ma'am, state your name and all, please.
Hi, my name is Tara Scully. I live on Ways Creek. I would like to bring up some points that haven't been made and that have been alluded to, and that is the fact that these are lands that are farmlands. They're not natural ecosystems. I'm a biologist and a restoration ecologist. This is not what we're talking about in terms of restoration of our ecosystems. Our ecosystems are being destroyed by the chemicals that are placed on these farmlands, like it has been said before, and I think we need to pay attention to that destruction that has been in existence for decades and continues to cause dead zones in our Chesapeake Bay. If we convert them to solar farms, guess what happens? We eliminate those chemicals from getting into the Chesapeake Bay. We help to restore the ecosystems in our aquatic systems, but also our natural ecosystems on the terrestrial systems as well. And so I think that needs to be paid attention to.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else in the virtual world like to speak? Anyone else? Anyone else in the virtual world like to speak? All right, since no one wants to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. The matter's before the board.
I was trying to speak, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I was hoping to just speak for 30 seconds.
Who are you?
My name's Craig Spisak. I'm a homeowner on Ways Creek. I would like to just sort of reiterate Mr. Jett's point about his land and his retirement. Are we to ask a man to work as a farmer until he's 90? Or should he not have the opportunity to do with his land as he pleases and create a financial ability for him to retire with some stability? And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. All right, the matter's before the board. What's the pleasure to the board?
My move, we deny it.
All right, I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, is that for the same reasons?
That's what, same reason, I have more.
Same reasons.
Thank you. Or is there going to be a second?
Going to be a second? I'll second it then.
In addition to the comments I made previously, I would also add several things. I'm sure many people, businesses, thought certain sites were great to be developed, but then they went south, and that's why we have superfund sites that the EPA has to clean up and taxpayers have to pay for that. Talking about coal, coal, I don't know about you, I go across occasionally and monitor Merrimack Bridge, and I see many a coal collier out there with piles high and high of coal. But then Dominion uses coal to help, to pay their, or provide their power to their energy system. But, once you use coal, then you have coal ash, and now we're having Dominion ratepayers are paying for that. It's the unforeseen, unknown situations about this type of process that concern me. Financial, but to my knowledge, nobody has decommissioned one of these sites, whether it's in California or here. The unknown of whether it's heavy metal, chemicals, whatever, but it's the, and I know it doesn't help Mr. Jett or anybody else who wants to get money on their farmland. You can always plant trees. It won't help Mr. Jett, because that's a long-term process. I understand that completely. That's generational. The lady mentioned about farming not being a normal ecosystem, that's generally right, but you can always plant trees. It does not help Mr. Jett, it'd help his grandkids. But, and the Chesapeake Bay, as far as the dead zone, was primarily due to phosphorus and nitrogen, not necessarily all this. And most of that's coming from the Susquehanna River, too.
Yes.
And so, for those are my reasons for making a motion to deny.
All right, any other comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Nay.
All right, motion passes four to one. All right, our next item on the agenda tonight, a request, is a request by Philip J. Haney. Mr. Morris?
We have a request by Philip J. Haney III, owner, to allow a mobile manufactured home park on property zone R2 residential waterfront. The property is shown as tax map parcel 37-1-195A and is located adjacent to 1015 Ways Creek Road.
All right, anyone here tonight representing Mr. Haney? Haney, would you have comments, please, sir?
I'd like to say my.
All right, so you don't want to make a statement of what you're planning on doing?
Was, is this the third or junior?
That's the second.
It says third on here.
This, the application has the third. That's your son. I mean, can't even get an application straight, come on. I know you didn't prepare. Oh, well, that's a different scenario, but who owns this land?
Philip J. Haney III owns the land.
Okay, he owns the land on this side of where the house spot was?
I own some of it and he owns some of it.
Okay, so.
But if we're applying for it, this one is him.
Okay, just wanted to have that clarified, because I know the other one we had a little issue about, but yeah.
We got it resolved. He owns some of it and I.
All right.
The idea is to be adding land onto your children.
I understand. Well, question I have then for you, Mr. Haney, since you're on his behalf, where specifically will this be placed? Because I've ridden by and looked at it several times, I see stakes for possibly 26... Because I've ridden by and looked at it several times, I see stakes for possibly 26 lots. Where specifically is this proposal located?
It's from inland harbor.
All right.
If you look at the fact, you'll see this place.
All I see is some, I hate to say it, but it looks like a drawing that a kid in middle school might have done.
Like that?
But it has no, it doesn't have to necessarily be a full-blown survey, but it needs to be a little bit more professional with some dimensions and stuff like that. That's, like I said, I have no idea where this was other than the 26 lots, potentially.
The tax parcel, there are several tax parcels, so it should be a, 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 a tax parcel.
So the location that you anticipate is right in front of Inland Harbor subdivision?
That is correct.
And what is the intention with the other possibly twen-- 20-some lots? To cut them like that?
That decision has a different context.
Well, why not just do lots all without, which you could do by right, as opposed to putting a trailer park there?
Because there are different owners and different parcels of the land.
Well, you and he and I guess Judy still are too, y'all can agree to do that.
We can, but each of us has, as an owner of the land, to, a right to do.
You're undivided ownership, right?
Uh, yes.
You haven't...
Divided ownership.
You haven't conveyed the land from the three or two of you, whatever it is, has not been conveyed individually to PJ?
Yes, his land is conveyed individually. The land that Judy and I own is undivided. So his land is conveyed. Yes, that is correct.
That's all I got.
Any other questions? Any board, any other board members have any questions for Mr. Haney? If not, I will open the public hearing. First person to speak on the list is Chris Maxwell.
Thank you. My name's Chris Maxwell. I'm the treasurer for the Inland Harbor Property Owners Association. Yesterday I submitted a, to the Office of Building and Zoning, a petition with over 100 signatures requesting that the board deny Mr. Haney's application for conditional use permit to build a mobile home manufactured home park. These signatures include residents and property owners in the nearby vicinity of the proposed project. The petition lists a variety of economic, environmental, and safety concerns that the residents have. In addition to the issues listed in the petition, the applications submitted and the advertising signage that Mr. Haney has posted do not meet several key requirements of the county's regulations for a mobile home, manufactured homes specified in County Code 148-152. County regulations require that the mobile home parks, quote, "will not change the character of the area or be detrimental to the existing properties," unquote. We believe such a project would adversely affect nearby properties, will change the character of the area, and will be detrimental to the property values of existing properties. County regulations require that mobile home parks provide a central water system. The submitted application suggests separate wells for each pair of mobile homes, contrary to the county regulations. County regulations require that mobile home parks be a minimum of 10 acres in size and no more than three mobile homes can be placed within a one-gross acre of land. The submitted application provides no scale, but surely suggests a higher density than allowed by county regulations. I would add, Mr. Tomlin, that the sites that you saw go beyond the property that's listed in the application. County regulations do not allow for individual sites to be sold or transferred as part of a mobile home park. Mr. Haney signed advertising light lots would be sold. Mr. Haney installed PVZ pipes on his property in conjunction with posting the sign advertising the project. I inferred these pipes to identify potential plots. These go beyond the, as I said, go beyond the property that the application is applied for. Mr. Haney has also posted a sign suggesting residents of his mobile home park will have water access through Inland Harbor. Mr. Haney, who's applied, does not own property in Inland Harbor. In addition, lots in Inland Harbor are zone R2, which does not permit commercial boat ramps or public beach access. In summary, the proposed mobile park would adversely affect nearby properties, would be detrimental to the property values of nearby residents, and does not meet the technical requirements specified in the county regulations. Therefore, I believe the application should be denied. Thank you.
All right, next person on the list is George Benjamin.
Well, I still live in the same place I'm selling off those guys. Okay. You know, it strikes me, my first time I came to an oiler neck was purely by accident. I was delivering a boat from Hampton to Annapolis and the weather was turning bad, wind was out of the north, the tide was turning, and I snuck into Reedville in 1954. And I'll never forget that snow. I couldn't get out on the tide the next morning any faster, but... So, I was born in Virginia, I'm a Virginian, of course, business took me all around and I'm finally back here again. I've lived here now almost six years again. And we have a beautiful, very, very special place here. And I look at Mr. Haney's proposal here, and to me, it just doesn't conform to the various developments in the county. Mobile home parks, the selling price will be lower than new conventional homes. I think if it was for conventional homes that were similar to what's in the Indian Harbor development right across the road there, I think we wouldn't be having a discussion. It would be accepted and boy, we would go right forward. But the fact that mobile homes have a lower selling price than current homes that we're building in the county says we're not going to get the tax revenue out of them that we would have conventionally built homes. So, I look at the reservation that comes in, and if you think about how that's going to affect other parts of our budget here in the county, it's going to affect our school budget, we're going to have additional support functions in the county, both social and physical, that are going to have to be dealt with because of the zoning that the previous gentleman cited. I've seen these type of projects evolve into Section 8 housing and subsequently increase the social costs and taxes. So gentlemen, I think the project needs to be revisited. I think it needs to be looked at from the standpoint of how do we bring it up? If we want to add the property value and change it with Mr. Haney's proposal, I would think we'd want to look at the same type of residences that we have like across the road there in Indian Harbor. Thank you.
All right, next person to speak is Vicki Wise.
My name is Vicki Wise. I live at 2277 Wiest Creek Road, and I'm opposed to the project for the concerns that I have for the demand that would be on the water supply. We're down gradient of Mr. Haney's property. And I'm also concerned about runoff, both Wiest Creek, the head water is right there at his property, and Warehouse Creek. Concerned about the septics, how they'll leach, how they'll impact the water quality. And not just for people who live on Wiest Creek Road, but those who have permits to oyster and fish and crab. Concerned that with the density, would they have to have a substation, an electrical substation? And just things like that, and just opposed for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Ron Resner.
Given the hour, I will simply incorporate my comments with the three ahead of us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next person is Bruce Samuelson.
Thank you. I'm Bruce Samuelson. My wife and I live at 622 Captain's Way in Reedville. And as the prior gentleman just did, I'll incorporate many of the other comments to try and save y'all some time. You know, as we've discussed throughout the night here, you know, the freedom to use our properties as we see fit is really, really important. But as y'all mentioned last week in the Energy Right presentations, that right is bounded by your regulations. And I think in this case, those regulations need to really be looked at. But, you know, I've gone through them as an engineer, I've read them, and it's very clear that the intent of those regulations is not to materially impact the surrounding neighborhoods and the communities and landowners. And I think in this situation, we've got impact in a number of areas that have been mentioned. You know, traffic on those two rural roads, plus the runoff, plus all the other issues. Community density, we don't know what this land is, you know, what the plan looks like. All we know is the density is going to go through the roof. And that's going to just create challenges for all the infrastructure around us. We talked about real estate values already here tonight. You know, I won't belabor the point as a landowner of what the adverse impact would be to my value, but the associated impact to y'all's revenue streams. You know, that'll letrid out over time, not just on the real estate, but the other tax streams, you know, on my boat, on the vehicles, other infrastructure, as it becomes difficult, you know, to sell my land or hand it down to my kids if they don't want it because of what's going on. The other thing I'd like to point out is the R2 designation for this piece of land. You know, it, I understand why that exists. I actually live on one of the pieces of land that was subdivided off of that original master parcel. But I think that R2 designation comes with very specific rules that need to be enforced here. Now, the application appears to talk to this being a business, not subdivided and resold properties. Again, it's confusing because the application's incomplete and not very transparent. But if it is a business or a master used development, I think we need to look at the environmental impacts, the master plan, what these streets look like, using real engineering drawings and plaits, not the kinds of sketches that we've seen in the application or have been able to find otherwise. Also, I want to point out that where I am at the end of the Inland Harbor neighborhood, there's a piece of empty land next to me. And that's actually owned, it's not clear who owns it, the tax registration shows that it's a gentleman named Mr. Jackson out of Yorba Linda, California. If you look at the advertising on this master parcel, it's Acquisition Strategies LLC out of Yorba Linda, California, and the registered agent for that LLC is Mr. Jackson. So it's my belief, I have to assume, that the intent of that advertising for access to water through the Inland Harbor Association is to that piece of land next to me, currently zoned as R2. And I would certainly hope that this application is not going to apply to that parcel 37B double circle 135. And if it is, then the application be denied, completed with all the proper paperwork and then revisited. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Jan Brammer.
Good evening. I'm Jan Brammer, Hickory Lane on Wiest Creek. I'm an avid walker and I'm up and down Wiest Creek Road on a very frequent basis, and I pass the proposed site all the time. And I just want to point out, these, my comments relate to what I've observed on my walk. Last summer, the Haney property harvested beautiful canola flowered crops. And I was stopped on walks, do you know what those plants are called? It's just awesome. People would stop and take pictures, and even a local artist captured the mood. So I asked, would you rather see crops growing or a trailer park? I deserve that the roads can't really handle any more traffic. The roads, the traffic's dangerous now and I'm concerned about more traffic. Also, the fields are wildlife habitat. I see deer, fox, rabbits. And the field right now is a huge refuge for birds who travel through the area. Lastly, the litter. Wiest Creek Road is constantly littered, and I hate to see more people coming in and more litter. My husband, on a regular basis, goes and picks up the litter, takes it to the dump. I stand in opposition to this project because of these items and for many other reasons as it relates to impacting our peaceful, quiet community we call home. Thank you.
All right, next person is Kurt Brammer.
Hello, my name's Kurt Brammer again. I'm at 83 Hickory Lane. Want to reference this gentleman, he told a story, so I'm going to tell a quick story. Two of my greatest memories of Wiest Creek going back 40 years of here, like his story, happens to deal with this young lady right over here. I'm waving to her. Her husband was a waterman on Wiest Creek all his life. They were born and raised here, pulled crabs out of there. He built probably skiffs for some of the people in this room. Lloyd Burz. That's his Wiest Creek, that's how I call it. Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, I appreciate you, allow me to approach you. Mr. Haney, thank you for allowing me to approach you, sir. And thank you, Mr. Morrison and all the staff. I'm opposed to this project, and I've got to tell you the reason why, because this is basically a subdivision. And it is multifamily. And in review of all of the paperwork that I've seen, it's rather incomplete and inconsistent and doesn't give us all the answers. If you review the actual application and look on the last page, there are too many to be determined. And I would not approve this of my school kids. If I was a teacher, I would not accept this work. So from that standpoint, I cannot accept it. But I do see beyond this as well. We recognize everybody's right to enjoy their property as they see fit. What a great freedom part we have. And I expect Mr. Haney to enjoy his rights as to freedom property, his freedom, just like we do. However, I think it does cross over when he is able to improve his property, but it is at a detriment to our property by reducing our property values, increasing our traffic on the road, and does not increase our values in life. So that's a big concern to us. So we have some real concerns with the value of our properties and how they're going to be impacted, that we can't change it. There's properties already in place. The other thing is, is we see that if this property were to start small and even grow, there would be more children brought into the county. We don't, we need to improve our economic development to bring in jobs, to fill these homes. We're going to have kids to educate. It's $15,000 average in the United States to educate one child. If we get 10 children down there, that's $115,000, $150,000 a year to educate a child, we're not going to get that in the tax value of these homes. So it's a big concern from a financial impact, and that means it's going to have to raise our taxes just to support this project. The other things that concern me a great deal is I have a deepwater well. And it is mentioned in the comprehensive plan of 2006... And it is mentioned in the comprehensive plan of 2016 that the southern part of the county does have an issue when the, the aquifer that comes off the Potomac, uh, gets down low under a hard use, it gets intrusion from the bay with sodium. And sodium is a huge issue. And it's interesting that just about half of the people in Ways Creek that I talked to all have high blood pressure issues and on medication because sodium is a huge problem. So we are very concerned about the water draw on the aquifer and ask that the health consideration be considered on this. Lastly, I got to talk about the environment because some of the stakes and where they're located, they're, they're not even, they're not, they're within 50 feet, 60 feet of the, where the creek springs are for Warehouse Creek and Ways Creek, the very spring waters where they start. Every year, we have a sign that travels up and down Ways Creek that tells us the water quality, and it says, if you go to pass this sign, do not consume any shellfish in Ways Creek. Uh, I've been trying to do oyster floats, my neighbor does oyster floats, we're trying to improve the water quality, but we're catching a lot of runoff, and it's, it's been tough to challenge. That's probably my call that I have to stop. I have plenty of other reasons. I will stop, um, but I will say, I please don't approve this project. We have a red-tailed hawk that I enjoy seeing on my walks, and, uh, his name is Jake, and he sits on the power line overseas that property. I'm here for him, too.
All right. Next person is Joan Ocelli.
She left.
She left?
She left.
All right. P Singleton? P Singleton? Must have left. Hey, Kay Chichi?
Thank you. In America, we have to learn how to disagree without being disagreeable. Uh, I love my neighbors. My family grew up on that property, and, um, I respect their rights. At the same time, all the people that live in Ways Creek, if I had never divided that property, you would never be living over there. And I understand and I appreciate all the time and effort you put in that property because it is probably one of the best subdivisions in the northern net. But this brings attention to a problem in North Thumlin County, affordable housing. It comes down to the haves and the have-nots. It's all right for people to live away, come home, come here, buy up lots, and have retirements. And I'm not hating on you, I'm respecting you. But they're black people and poor people who live here all their lives, and there's no affordable housing. So we have to reach a happy median where everybody in America can have a house, where everybody in America can live and make a living. And, you know, with a, um, with the understanding heart, you know, I'm going to withdraw this project. I don't want to do anything to hurt my neighbors. At the same time, I tried to do solar, which would eliminate all the runoff and the fertilizer from the fields, and that was wrong. And now we're doing something else, uh, that's going to create runoff. So I want to withdraw the project right now. I don't want to cause a problem. But I think the county should work and come up with a way where people who don't have big retirements can live. Every day, I get a call from some poor woman with two kids that has nowhere to stay. So as the leaders of the county, you have to make this a place for everybody, not just for those who have big retirement checks. So I'm asking you to withdraw this project from board.
All right. As Mr. Haney stated, he wishes to withdraw the project. So we will close the public hearing, and, uh, no other action will have to be taken.
I do want to commend Mr. Haney for doing this, but he, you're, Mr. Haney, you are very correct about the need for affordable housing. But I also want to say that affordability isn't always low-income homes. We're talking people like the deputy or the captain, they need housing, too. My daughter's a teacher. We gave her land, family land. But I can tell you, the interest rates that they have been raising have put her out the loan market without raising so much. So it's, it's the whole continuum, the have and have-nots. But that notch is moving up a whole lot higher than what it was. So yes, you are right, Mr. Haney, there needs to be some addressing, and this is not unique to North Thumlin County. I look in Richmond, they're looking at all kinds of scenarios. But this is a, a long-term, in, long-term immediate problem. Oxy-moron statement, but it's an immediate problem, but it's long-term. So, but thank you, Mr. Haney, but you are correct.
All right. That's all our public hearings tonight. Have a full, have a, uh, ladies and gentlemen, y'all be quiet here, please. Have a full.
20-0.
Huh? That's right, it ain't going to work.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're still in session. If y'all could just take your conversations outside. Ladies and gentlemen, we're still in session. Could y'all please take your conversations outside? Thank you.
We might get home by midnight.
No, we get home.
We're still in session. Please let us get this meeting over with.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are still in session. We need y'all to go outside, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're still in session. We would like to get this meeting over with tonight. I got to get this meeting over with. Sit down, Kurt. Sit down, Kurt. The meeting's not over with.
Every day except for 4:00, close session, man. That's all that we got left?
Huh?
Close session, the only thing left?
We're going, I think we're going to let that go until next week. Mr. Tadlock, you got any dates?
The, um, thing that I've got on the agenda, or the, um, draft date, was next Wednesday at 5:00. So it's up to the board if you all.
Next Wednesday, 5:00 PM?
Yeah, sounds good.
That'll be what, the 15th?
Yes, sir, I believe that's correct.
All right. You be there?
5:00 PM. Sounds good.
Thank you.
That date work for everybody?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
And, and main thing I was looking at was any discussion on the, um, school budget, but, uh, we can also.
Sir, can you please keep the door open? It's an open meeting.
Somebody just took the clothes off.
No. Not yet.
Not yet.
Thank you. I know.
The door can be closed as long as it's not locked, can it?
I don't want anybody.
When it says, uh.
Because all the doors are always closed when we had the other boardroom being, beating over there.
When the door's closed, that implies a closed-door meeting.
It stayed closed.
I know you were trying.
You're right.
All right. So, Mr. Tadlock, meet next?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, the 15th at 5:00 PM?
5:00 PM, and we have a school budget, uh, discussion, and we can discuss the closed meeting items at that time. Uh, there's nothing pressing at this time on those.
All right. Any board members have anything else? Or you have anything else, Mr. Tadlock?
I do not.
We're going to discuss the, the insurance for part-time?
We can discuss that at that time as well. Yes, sir.
All right.
I know you, we haven't gotten to it, but the proposed meeting on the 29th, we can do it, but that's, 6:30 is when you have a possible emergency management meeting then, too.
I got to attend that one. Okay. Yeah, they were just, I was throwing out some dates.
I mean, it can still work some, but that's, that's, I mean, that's the fifth, uh, Wednesday.
That would be the fifth Wednesday.
And that quarterly.
And I can update that, so.
What we said, on the 29th?
That's, that's open to discussion right now. But right now, the 20th, the 15th is good for everybody.
Right. The 29th is good for me, too.
All right. Y'all got anything else? All right, I got one thing I want to make a motion to. I want to make a motion that all of our public hearings that we have, that all information is sent to us, including emails, plots, letters, as it comes in, and all suggested conditions shall be sent to us a minimum of five days before the meeting.
I'll second that.
I got a motion and a second on the floor. Do I have any other discussion?
No, that, I agree with that, no problem. The other thing is, like in the last application, you had a sketch that didn't even comply with the.
Well, that's another thing.
Meaning 10 acres and all like that. I mean, I don't know how we do that without, that require Mr. Morrison then to be put in a position of possibly turning down an application. The app, I don't know.
I don't know.
That one was, didn't meet any requirements.
All right, any other discussion?
Just to clarify, are you asking that all correspondence be?
All correspondence.
Be sent?
So emails, letters, plaits, whatever comes in to Mr. Morrison's office, comes to this board so we can see what's going on.
All right. Now, the correspondence, I believe, is being sent as soon as you all get that.
Yeah, just want to, just want to make, I'm just trying to put it all in one, in one motion, is all.
Okay. I, because I was getting ready to say.
I'm not saying he's not doing it now.
No.
I'm just putting it all together.
I just wanted to clarify, we don't necessarily have that information five days out in advance. So you're just saying as soon as possible.
Your conditions, we need a five days in advance.
Got you. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Haney, I suggest that you allow for an exception to be made in, on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, I, I will put that in, you can put that in the motion, too.
Thank you.
And it's one thing for board members to realize, like, I got some emails because it was an application directly to myself, that's when I forwarded to everybody else, too.
Yeah. Well, you know, a lot of that stuff's fine. Conditions would be nice if we could get them earlier. And I do understand you're getting emails in all the time. That's all right. Hold it that soon as you can get it. Conditions would be nice, especially on the project like we just had on the solar, so we can have time to review.
Mr. Morrison, right now, some, what is the, if somebody applies today, I don't want to look through a calendar or whatever, they applied today for a, a zoning application, when could they considerably get on our agenda? Next month?
For the April meeting would be March 23rd. So it's three weeks prior.
Is that something that would, and this is you and Luttrell and everybody else's staff, do you want to have more time from the date of their application to the time of advertising?
I mean, I, I would love to, but the applicants don't always give me what I request, and at the same time, not everyone gives me correspondence until right before the board meeting to establish conditions to try to help address it.
Well, you need to draw a deadline on them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think, I think you, obviously, especially the solar farms and more complicated things, you need time to, one, review the stuff and then come up with suggestive condition, possibly get up with Mr. Gregory or consult with other staff. So I think if you and Luttrell, or Mr. Gregory, if he feels the need, discuss whether to push it back. I mean, it's got to be fair to you, too. And also to help protect the, the public so they have a way to know.
Yeah, couldn't, couldn't you just turn around and tell them, you know, if you, if you're going to bring all us in at the last minute, we, you're going to have to postpone the hearing to the following month.
Well, it probably is once you advertise.
I know, it's what you advertise. But you're going to have to tell them it's a deadline to bring anything in.
I certainly can. I mean, we try to accommodate as best we can, and a lot of these conditional use permits are based upon real estate sales that are under contract, and it, it.
Well, I can.
I know.
I can tell you, if you sign up for, you want to get a lot, and you try to get a surveyor in 30 days, forget that. I know personally.
Yeah, but I'd like to, not to advertise that you gun everything that you need.
Yeah. What did?
Some of it's coming, like it happened last month, you said you, you didn't have a complete drawings of everything you needed when it was advertised.
Correct.
Yeah.
So really, the people felt like that they didn't have a good description, they couldn't get what was advertised.
Well, I, maybe it's decision of what constitute a completed application. Unless and until they meets that, right, does not get advertised.
If they want to give it advertised, they'll get you the information.
And if nothing else, a completed application, but a synopsis like the Ditchley one, until you, what, yesterday or the day before, we had no idea of in the bare bones application.
That's right. And I know it puts you between a rock and a hard place, so if you, that would be the best thing. Tell them they got to have everything, you got to have everything before you'd advertise.
Yeah. We want, we appreciate you trying to help the public, but then the public sometimes get hurt, but more importantly, then we get rocking the hard place.
Richard, one thing I, I think you need to do, you need to repeat, uh, if you have to repeat it two or three times, four minutes when they're speaking.
It's right out there, people don't read.
It's right there, Jim, you do it, you try to cut them off, it's difficult to cut them off.
It might be there, it might, I didn't say it wasn't there. But it would help people to prepare what they want to say. I mean, it's no, it's no harm in just saying it one or two times. Don't forget it's four minutes. There's no harm in doing that. You know, that would help the person prepare how, his speech, what he want to say, you know?
All right. Well, the other thing is people need to.
That's fine. Now, we got a motion on the floor, and we got off track on that.
Yeah, we did.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 I got one thing I'd like to just bring up, just for, for thought. I wonder if we need to start our merit meetings half an hour, uh, earlier, so we can get through with the afternoon stuff. I hate making these people here for 7:00 public hearing, and we still got something else going on. I don't know, night was a little accepting. Wouldn't cause it that, but.
Well, public comment period puts us behind, too, by having that in the middle.
Yeah, I mean, like, last month, we went to a closed meeting, and they had 10 minutes after 7:00.
I know. And that's, but we can always put the closed meeting at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, and do that.
That may be something that we need to do.
Yeah, we had it at 5:00, then we adjusted, because we had a quote-unquote summer break. May have not worried about that.
But lose, looks like our reports and stuff are getting longer, of course, highway does, the school does, and it's just.
Well, that's up to y'all.
Well, just give us some thought, there ain't got to be no delay tonight.
I'd like to see us move to 5:00. That'd be good.
Well, let's just think about it, we got a meeting on the 15th, and we make a decision then.
Luttrell, when, when we did, after the January meeting, you did schedule a meeting. Did that have a time attached to it?
Move public hearing to 6:00 PM.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, if it does, then we need to make that.
Give it up to everyone. And they go to January, because you don't have to be here for the afternoons, I think, for the presentations.
Well, he.
I mean, you think you need to.
Yeah, there's business.
Well, you just want to get rid from all of it.
I want to get out of here a little early.
Hope you don't have to be in court tomorrow morning.
Not tomorrow.
Roger will drive you.
All right.
It'll get long.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to carry over.
Carry over, next Wednesday.
All right, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Thank everybody for coming.